I'm present, that is three, six, seven members of the CBA who are present. The five voting members this evening will be myself, Mr. Swanton, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Bennig, and I believe, is it Mr. Ginta or, sorry, Mr. Iger?
Well, you have five, right?
So we have one, we have, no, but just, just two motions, on motions and other matters. We have three, four, one of you two will be the fifth. Mr. Chairman is not able to vote because he's.
Yeah, it's my decision. He did it last week.
Yeah. So continuation, it'll be Mr. Ginta?
No.
No, Mr. Iger. Great. So the five voting members for purposes of motions and any other matters or advancement, matters or requests by the board this evening will be Mr. Igerman, Mr. Bennig, Mr. Delisle, Mr. Swanton, and myself. Okay. Having called the rule, established a forum and our voting members, we will pick up where we left off in continuation of the Port Plaza Realty Trust care of Lisa Mead, me, Tower, and Nacosta. This is a continuation of traffic analysis. I believe where we left off was questions from the board, but I will give the floor to attorney B to if you want to make any statement.
Sure. If I could, if you would indulge me, Lisa Mead, me, Tower, and Nacosta, 33rd Street, on behalf of the applicant, Port Plaza Realty Trust. And with me this evening is Richard Kaplan, one of the trustees of Port Plaza Realty Trust, Steve Scorch, my whole counsel from posted stores on this, and as you indicated, Randy Byron from Bowler Engineering, and Jeff Dirk is on line. And I just wanted to bring the board up to speed before we turn it over to Jeff or to the board to answer the questions that happened. But there were a number of questions put to Jeff last time, as well as TEC relative to some crosswalks and some turns and things like that. And so we hopefully that we've addressed a number of those questions. And in our presentation and what we have submitted to the board shows the proposals that we're making as well. I'm happy to answer those questions or how, however you want to approach that, Mr. Chair. But Mr. Dirk is ready to present the changes so the board can address those or however it is that you want to go about that.
Thank you, Attorney. So members of CBA, so essentially, I believe where we left off, we had gone through as many of the questions from the board as we had ripened at the last evening's meeting. We did send the applicant off with changes and requests. Does the board wish to hear that presentation now and then we can pick up with continuation of questions or any other circle? Yes, so we'll go ahead and give the floor to Mr. Dirk?
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Dirk, can you hear us?
I can, yes. Can you hear me, Mr. Chairman?
You can, thank you. You have the floor, sir.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, members of the board. Jeffrey Dirk with Vanessa and Associates for the record. Andy, I don't know if you have the presentation that we provided. If not, I can go through kind of what you've got for slides.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I do have the Bowler, which was a separate, Mr. Jack.
Yes, this morning.
Okay, yeah, apologies. Hang on just one second, then apologies. I had to add to that, which part of the. Okay, yeah, go ahead. It will be these.
Oh, perfect. Thank you very much, Andy. I appreciate that. So you can go to the next slide, Andy. Thanks. So Mr. Chairman, I know, you know, we've had a brief hiatus since the meeting last week, but I think as our attorney had mentioned, there's actually been a lot of work done since the last meeting. And that work is directly responsive to what we heard as comments from the board. And I think most importantly, it's, as we, I think we've said at the prior hearings, it's a result of the peer review and working cooperatively with your consultant, TEC, and Andy's office as well. And we think that the refinements to the project we're going to present tonight, I really don't think there's anything of surprise to the board because it's directly a result of the comments we received at the last hearing. So I'll go through those changes and I'm also going to respond to some of the questions that the board had, and specifically looking at the increase in traffic at the driveways along Low Street. So we have a couple of slides to talk about that. This slide is really a summary of some of the things that we've gone through before, but just not to lose sight of them. As we've looked at the impact of the project, as we've said, there's no significant increase or motors delays or vehicle queuing. Again, that does not mean that there are not delays happening out there. And we've talked about that at the past hearings. Project-related impacts at the Story Ave, Low Street-Woodman Way intersection were defined as really no more than an increase of one second, an increase in vehicle queuing of more than one vehicle. So our focus really has been on Low Street and the access into the Port Plaza. And I think a lot of discussion, a meaningful discussion on safety of motor vehicles and pedestrians along Low Street. So some of the questions that the board had was really trying to quantify, you know, how much additional traffic does the project produce in relation to existing conditions? And so just quantifying some of those numbers. So Low Street today accommodates approximately 14,170 vehicles on an average weekday, and that's two-way traffic. The project will add 704 vehicles to Low Street. That represents an increase of about 5% over existing conditions. And I think as your consultant will attest, we typically experience, or roadways typically experience a fluctuation of 5% or more, just Monday to Friday. Low volumes on Monday, Friday's kind of an anomaly, Thursday tends to be a peak travel period. So when we look at what the traffic volumes change along the roadway over that five-day period, you generally would find that that fluctuation is about 5% or more. So I mention that because as we look at the impact of the project, the project's impacts are really within typical daily fluctuation of traffic volumes, meaning that it would not be significantly noticeable over the conditions that exist out there today. Now, that does not apply to the driveways. As we're talking about the driveways, there's a need for some consideration as it relates to access to the project, but also looking at off-site opportunities. As we looked at the Low Street driveways, what we found in terms of the increase in traffic is it's fewer than one added vehicle every two to three minutes. So it's not significant in terms of its increased traffic. And I think your consultant had said that. I think the consultant has made it very clear, it's not about the increase in traffic because it's not a large increase. It's really about safety of motor vehicles and pedestrians. Next slide, please, Andy. Looking at the crash history, and again, this is, this is important as well, there's no high crash locations along the corridor. So there are crashes happening, but it's not disproportionate to the amount of traffic that's flowing through the, through the area. And looking at the severity of the crashes that are occurring, the majority of them are property damage only. And so as it relates to significance in terms of severity of crashes, as the state weights high crash locations, there are no high crash locations, either based on number of crashes or the severity of the crashes. Now, we did discuss at the last hearing, and I think the board members are aware, there were two motor vehicle, there were two crashes that resulted in fatalities that involved pedestrians in this area. Very unfortunate, of course, that those, those types of crashes occur in the area because pedestrians are vulnerable users. As some of you may know, as you're looking at really, you know, we look at what are the causes of those crashes, so as we develop recommendations to try to address them, we want to have a better understanding of why they're occurring. In looking at those crashes that did occur and looking at the crash reports, the crashes in these instances were more related to, you know, in one instance, it was a pedestrian walking within the traveled way that was reported to, you know, be walking between the shoulder into the traveled way and kind of weaving, for lack of a better term. Again, a very unfortunate situation. It happened at night, but it was not something that was attributed to a specific roadway defect, meaning it's not something that we can really develop an improvement strategy to address that type of crash. The other crash on Story Avenue was a pedestrian that was crossing, I don't believe, at the, at the intersection. Again, an unfortunate situation that's not necessarily something that could be addressed through a specific roadway improvement. So again, you know, both very unfortunate situations that occurred out there, but not something that's subject to correction by something that we could come up with, with a brand-new roadway design. That being said, that does not mean that we don't want to design for vulnerable roadway users. And I think, you know, that's something that, you know, we've taken to heart as we've looked at the improvements that we're going to talk about in a minute, that we've developed since the last meeting. And so one of those improvements, and I think Andy had the plan up there earlier on, is we have committed to constructing the pedestrian improvements across Low Street. So that being a crossing with a rectangular rapid flashing beacon, we've also said to the extent that, you know, the city desires the hybrid beacon, which we don't think is appropriate in this situation for a number of reasons. We talked about the interaction of a red signal, let's say, at a crossing in relation to the signal at Story Avenue. There are some really, there's some real dynamics that happen in a situation where we would introduce another stop condition, and I think your consultant had mentioned that as well. We're suggesting the rectangular rapid flashing beacon is the more appropriate solution with some other accommodations that I'll show in a slide in a minute. The applicant continues to commit to providing the $75,000 financial contribution to the city for the study and design of additional improvements along Low Street. These are, this is money in addition to the physical improvements that we're proposing to construct, which are a significant enhancement over what we've discussed at the last meeting. And I would be remiss if I didn't again mention the fact that we're replacing an existing retail store on the project site that could be reoccupied as a right. We've gone through ad nauseam the significant reduction in traffic that this residential project represents versus a reoccupancy. Next slide, Andy. So context of the project site, I won't spend a lot of time on this. Site shown in yellow, the Port Plaza in orange. And I would just, before we go to the next slide, just, you know, looking at the context of the site importantly as it relates to all the other uses that are within walking distance, so the Market Basket, the Shaws, the uses within the Port Plaza. So some of these improvements that I know that your consultant has been making sure that we implement as a part of the plan are really intended for connectivity, and we've now enhanced some of those things at his urging. Next slide, Andy. So in looking at the site plan, if you might recall from the past meeting last week, Kevin had gone through from TEC some refinements that he would like to see as it relates to access to the center Port Plaza driveway on Low Street. And what you see to the left-hand side of the slide is, we've taken those improvements that he suggested, actually added some parking spaces along the west side of the drive, extended out the raised island. So if you remember, as he was talking about that kind of a hairpin turn exiting from the drive aisle, parallel to the center drive, that's now been eliminated and we've basically introduced what your consultant had recommended. So that's now a part of the plan. Next slide, Andy. So now looking at kind of to the north of the proposed residential building, there was discussion about that long crosswalk that exists basically between the residential building on the, it's the northwest corner of the building, that it was 57 feet, I believe, is what the distance was there. And, you know, mentioned that that's not desirable crossing distance for a pedestrian being exposed for that long within the traveled way. So again, we've, we've taken the comments from your review consultant and you see them reflected in the plan here. So now we've shortened that crossing distance to really just be crossing a standard 24-foot wide drive aisle. So we've almost, we cut that distance in half essentially, and it's resulted in more parking. And I think that was the other thing that was stressed, was trying to get more parking against the residential building for use by the residents of the project. So it's accomplished several objectives as it relates to circulation within the plaza itself. So those are all a part of the new site plan. Again, as I said, peer review results in better projects, and I think this is again a case where that's actually, you know, been brought to bear, and this is a much better project for sake of those peer review comments. Next slide, Andy. So this slide shows, this is a slide you've seen before, just showing the trip characteristics of the project under column A, and as a right reoccupancy, the retail space and the difference, and, you know, not belaboring that point, but a significant reduction. But again, looking at the hourly flow as it relates to just over the course of an hour. And what you see is the project produces 73 vehicles per hour, which is essentially one vehicle every 49 seconds as it relates to Low Street and Story Avenue. So, you know, I could indulge, if, Mr. Chairman, if you wanted, we could indulge ourselves and sit here in silence for 49 seconds, but I think it's actually a lo, a long time as it relates to sitting there in silence, just looking at the fact that one, you know, 73 vehicles per hour, over the course of that hour, it's not a significant increase as it relates to the flow of traffic along Low Street or Story Avenue, and it's dispersed between the driveways that serve the project site. So again, just kind of looking at bringing the number of vehicles per hour down to more of a, you know, a normalized value. So it's one vehicle every 49 seconds, which is not significant in terms of its flow. Therefore, that's why we're saying not a significant impact in terms of increased delay or vehicle queuing. Next slide, Andy. So this is that dispersal that we talked about. 83% of the trips will be oriented to and from Low Street. As we talked about in the initial slide, that's about 704 vehicles added to over 14,100 vehicles, so it's a 5% increase in traffic over existing conditions. Again, as we looked at, how does that relate to motors delays and vehicle queuing? We didn't show that there was any significant increase in terms of delays or queuing. Next slide, Andy. Now, I know one of the board members, as we were talking about the driveways on Low Street, wanted, you know, more information as it relates to what is the increase in traffic in the driveways. So we've looked at that in this slide and really just focused on what is the increase in terms of entering or exiting traffic from the driveways? So if you remember at the last hearing, we had said that the driveway egress, or the to, I'm sorry, the driveway that would intersect the center Low Street driveway to the Port Plaza, we had committed to making that be a one-way entrance because of the fact that we did not want to interfere with the exiting vehicle queue as it's heading toward Low Street. So we, at that time, were looking at no increase in traffic exiting to Low Street. So the center driveway wouldn't experience any additional egressing traffic to Low Street. We've since had some discussions with your consultant in looking at the opportunity to have a right turn exiting that driveway. And I think that your consultant had always suggested that that might be an opportunity that we would not want to, you know, preclude ourselves of having for a number of reasons. The primary reason being that vehicles that want to travel to Story Avenue would have that opportunity of not having to go out onto Low Street, make a right-hand turn, go all the way up to the Story Avenue intersection, make another right-hand turn to head to and from the northeast of the project site. So if we forced all the traffic to come out the east driveway, we would be adding additional trips to the Story Avenue intersection that don't need to be there, that could actually use the roadway within the plaza and not have to go through that traffic signal. The other advantage to allowing a right turn exit would allow for vehicles that want to go to the Market Basket Plaza, or, you know, if someone wants to get to the Shaws or other uses in the area there, they could then use that movement to go through the plaza to patronize those other uses. So it would serve some advantages. It would also, I think, deal with one of the issues that the board was raising, which, which dealt with concentrated traffic at that east driveway. So allowing a right turn movement exiting to the center driveway doesn't mean, doesn't force all traffic to exit from the east driveway, so it provides some advantages. One of the things that we need to go along with that is, of course, monitoring. So what the applicant is committed to doing is we will have video monitoring within the garage so that we're monitoring the exiting traffic, and then there would be an enforcement policy that goes along with that. So as we're monitoring that, if we do find that vehicles are violating, say, making the left-hand turn, which would continue to be prohibited, they would first be given notice that they shouldn't be making that move, and that they would then be subject to fines. And so there would be a fine structure for the, for the second and any subsequent violations of that is what we propose there. But we do think there's some advantages and would suggest the board consider allowing a right turn exit to the center driveway, but continuing to prohibit the left turn movement exiting that driveway. So now I'm looking at each of the driveways and the turning movements of there. If we looked at the left turn movement from Low Street into the center driveway, we're predicting that there would be 22 additional vehicles making the left-hand turn movement from Low Street to enter the center driveway to then enter the garage, which is about one added vehicle every two and a half minutes. Again, not a significant increase in vehicles making that movement. The through, through traffic movements on Story Avenue, I'm sorry, through traffic heading towards Story Avenue, so this would be vehicles coming out of the east driveway, making a right-hand turn, and then traveling to, towards Story Avenue. If we did not have the right turn ability to exit from the center driveway or to the center driveway, the increase would be 31 vehicles traveling toward the signalized intersection at Story Avenue, which is one vehicle every two minutes, which, as I've said, as we looked at delays and queuing, the delays didn't go up by any more than one second, and queues didn't go up by any more than one vehicle. So again, not a significant increase. Vehicles exiting Low Street will do so outside of typical queuing from the traffic signal of Story Avenue. And what that means is, again, because we're not allowing the left turn, or I'm sorry, we're not allowing the left turn movement to the center driveway, so we don't have any vehicles that are coming out of that driveway. The vehicles that are exiting, that would want to go to Low Street to head towards Story Avenue, they're going to come out of the east driveway, make a right-hand turn, and they'd be entering at the back of the queue on Story Avenue. So we're not introducing vehicles into the queue that exists from the intersection. They come in toward the back of the queue, which is what we want. We don't want to be introducing vehicles into the middle of the queue or somewhere other than the back of the queue. So this provides that opportunity by having the exiting vehicles coming out the east driveway. They don't get into the middle of the queue to the extent it extends back toward the center driveway. Next slide, Andy, please. So now I'm looking at the improvements that we propose. So since the last hearing, and again, based on comments from your review consultant and what we heard from the city engineer as well, what we're committing to doing is, on Low Street approaching the center driveway to the Port Plaza, the applicant has agreed to be designing, constructing a left turn lane to enter the Port Plaza center driveway, so that the additional 22 vehicles plus the existing traffic that's going to the Port Plaza will have the benefit of having a left turn lane to be able to go in the plaza so that we're not impeding the flow of through traffic along Low Street. We have confirmed that there is sufficient room within the paved area to allow for this improvement to take place. So there's no need to acquire private property. It can all be done within the existing city right of way that exists out there today. So it is an improvement that we, the applicant can design and construct with the requisite approvals from the city. The other thing that this allows us to do, and your consultant alluded to that, is that if you look to the right side of the driveway, so to the east of the driveway, that area where we have the left turn lane on the west side allows us to be able to introduce a raised island on the right-hand side or the east side of the intersection because of the space that's been created by restriping to put that left turn lane in place. So what that allows us to do is, was discussed by your consultant at the last meeting, is basically for pedestrians, it's a refuge island, or it allows for a pedestrian to cross Low Street in a two-stage manner. They can cross from one side to the island and then to the other side. Desirably, that happens all in one. Desirably, that happens all in one movement. But if there's the need to, to stop because we heard about vehicles not stopping at red lights and such, this provides a refuge island in the center of the intersection that is of size so that the pedestrian has a place to stop in the middle to the extent that they need to before continuing their crossing. Uh, you do see sidewalk segments with wheelchair ramps being provided. And also, as I mentioned, we would be installing a rectangular rapid flashing beacon. What's not shown is all of the signing that goes along with this. So it's not just the crossing, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon. Uh, there are signs on that island. There are signs in advance of the crossing, and these are high visibility pavement markings. So this is going to be a highly visible, uh, crossing location, um, with the flashing beacon and with the advanced warning signs. It can operate in a very safe manner. Um, and we believe it's responsive to all of the comments we've heard, both from the board, the public, as well as, is responsive to your review consultant. Next slide, Andy. So there were also some questions, I think, from one of the audience members at the last meeting about what a fair share contribution is. So we, we thought we would, you know, just provide some definition to it. And it also provides some definition as to where the seventy-five thousand dollar contribution, you know, what, what that would mean in terms of a fair share contribution. Uh, so a fair share contribution, as the board probably knows, um, it's a way to develop an equitable and proportionate share of a project's responsibility or benefit toward improvement. So this is an improvement that may not be necessarily, um, determined or derived as a direct result of the, the project or its impacts, but it's an improvement that will result in a significant benefit to all roadway users, including the project. And so when we have situation where, situations where that occur and where that improvement might be disproportionate to the impact of the project, you, the fair share cost contribution is a typical approach, uh, to using it. So the fair share co- cost, cost contribution is generally determined based on the impact to the project, uh, which in its most simplistic term is the percent increase that the project represents over the no build condition. Um, so we look at traffic volumes under the build condition. We look at traffic volumes under the no build condition. We compare the two. We establish what that percent increase or impact is as a result of the project, and then that gets applied against the cost of a, a specific improvement measure. So thinking back to that la- first slide that I had, the project represents about a five percent increase in traffic along Low Street. So if we look at that five percent increase, the seventy-five thousand dollar financial contribution, it represents about five percent of a one-point-five million dollar improvement project. So it, as you might remember from the last public hearing, there were some initial discussion about, well, what would it cost if in the future, we needed to put a traffic signal in place or something along those lines, um, at the center driveway? You know, and there was talk that it could be, you know, anywhere from, you know, one-point-two-five to one-point, you know, three-seven-five million dollars. So you know, one-point-five million is probably, you know, a reasonable, um, establishment of a cost for what the signal may be. And so that seventy-five thousand dollars, you could look at it as it's representative of the cost of, of this project's contribution toward an improvement such as a traffic signal at that intersection. So, um, again, we are now committed to constructing that's the left turn lane, the rectangular rapid flashing beacon, the crosswalk, the raised island, uh, for that Low Street intersection, as well as contributing the seventy-five thousand dollars. So um, in the instance of the project, we're doing physical improvements that address all of the things that we've heard from the board. They're desirable as it relates to the project and having a safe crossing at that location. Um, and then we're also contributing the seventy-five thousand dollars to allow for future work to take place along Low Street. Um, Andy, I think that's my last slide, so I'll, um, I'll conclude there and, and then be available, Mr. Chairman, for any questions that, uh, you may have now or after you hear from your consultant.
Thank you, Mr. Dirk. Um, with that, uh, we're going to ask here from Kevin Dandray from Tech Inc. Uh, on behalf of the city and, uh, the CBA with respect to commentary on the traffic and analysis we just heard. Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, it's nice to see you again. Um, and as a follow-up to my presentation from last week, um, the applicants team has done a considerable amount of work to respond to our prior comments. So, um, I, I believe that they've been substantially responsive, um, to a number of the elements. And Mr. Dirk went through some of the adjustments that they made to the onsite design within the plaza. Um, there are a couple of things that in talk with the applicants team just before the meeting, there was a prior exhibit that showed one of the on, other onsite pedestrian connections that was planned. This, um, exhibit that showed up on the screen now doesn't show that getting up there, but I think that'll be added in the next iteration. Um, but that view of that northwesterly corner of the building, for instance, um, I think is a substantial, um, from where the plan once was. Uh, the short pedestrian crossing, the layout of the parking in relation to the building. Um, and as Mr. Dirk mentioned, there are a number of things that make it a better plan with them having incorporated that, um, recommendation. So the, the description is, it just came and we received correspondences, uh, two on September twenty-sixth and one on September twenty-ninth yesterday. Um, the most recent of which uh, revolves around what Mr. Dirk mentioned with the driveway from the garage to the center plaza driveway. Um, I'd actually originally recommended that considering right out old. Um, it got more to be a little bit too far to be entrance only, which was good. But it did reduce some of that flexibility to get up to Story Avenue. So with the recent discussions and the requests as documented in the letter from September twenty-ninth from Jeff, um, I have no issues with that. I think the important piece that he mentioned is the monitoring, uh, both by the applicant and/or the city. Um, the reason for me recommending to get rid of the left out of that garage exit uh, was the queuing and blocking that would occur in that center driveway. If the residents that are using that head right and up towards Story Ave, um, I don't see any issue. I, I see there's a beneficial change to the plan. Um, but to be accompanied with monitoring to make sure that it doesn't result in abuse of people that try to sneak out. If it results in that type of abuse uh, between the city and coordination with the applicant, the owner, um, it might need to revert back to entrance only, but um, I believe that there's, uh, significant merit trying to accommodate that right out from the garage at that location. Um, aside from that, uh, one of, uh, the recent correspondences on Jeffrey showed the exhibit for the offsite. Uh, I'll likely be recommending a couple of tweaks to that, but there are certain things where, um, they've been responsive to try to add that dedicated left turn pocket. They've been responsive to try to add that refuge island for pedestrians, uh, which I had recommended. Uh, certain things to consider would be, you know, having another RRF in the median island so that if somebody's within that refuge area, they can push the button again. But it also increases the vis- visibility along Low Street eastbound, westbound if there's another flashing warning device in the middle of the road. Uh, other suggested tweaks would be, um, just coordinating with Miva to find out what their recommended platform depth is for sidewalk. Typically, it's about eight feet. So that from an ADA standpoint, if they put the, the lifts down, uh, there's room for five-foot sidewalk in a little bit of play there for the ramp. That's something that could be coordinated. Um, I believe there's still sufficient room for what is visible within the right of way. Um, other things like making sure that the ADA ramps crosswalks across each approach, like even the Hodges approach. Um, maybe some extra conduit under the intersections that if someday it does get fully signalized, that it reduces the amount of impact uh, to do it right, do it once and have some extra conduits that goes particularly north-south in the area of the new crosswalk. Uh, I believe that will be a powerful improvement for both left turns that are staged to turn into the plaza as well as, uh, and a significant improvement for pedestrians out there. The one other consideration that, um, you know, from a spatial standpoint is yes, that left turn lane could fit within the existing paved area. Um, but it does shrink the side shoulders that are currently mostly bicycle accommodating down to over two feet. It's, um, something I haven't fully reviewed yet, but I'll be, reach out to planning, engineering and DPW to discuss. Um, and then finally, I think just looking at the completely different makeup of the striping within the road. Um, I don't see any of this as shown currently that would impact drainage. That island would be in the middle of the road. So at the crown line where water sheds off. Uh, but I believe that, um, uh, we'll take a look with engineering and DPW about the potential need to do like a micro resurfing or surfacing or something that doesn't make it look all spread out with changing all the pavement markers that looks complete and final once it's done. Uh, but again, I do believe that they've been working hard over the last week. Um, and although we haven't completed our review, I'm happy to see that they're, they've been very responsive in the short term.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dandray. Uh, we may serve back with questions. Uh, in the meantime, what I'd like to do is move to, uh, uh, Mr. John Eric White, our city engineer, just for any follow-up commentary.
Uh, sorry, I just love that. I, I, my understanding is that he cannot be able to join us for you now. However, he, I think we've been into Phil's comments, uh, on scroll motor side that and I think, um, and the GSC comments today, for my understanding, they did everything for official.
Oh, has been discussing.
On traffic, uh, yeah, it is up here. And then I think Phil, when we throw our, we do that together.
Okay. Um, great. Well, um, then, uh, with that, let me just ask, I want to just take one more moment, uh, Mr. Dirk, Mr. Dirk, uh, any final comments? Just as I, you know, we, we want to sort of make the final link, we'll close the loop on rounds. Anything you wish to add with respect to what we heard from, uh, from Mr. Dandray and Tech?
Not at all, Mr. Chairman. I think those are, um, all good points as it relates to the design. And I think, again, as I had said many times, I, I think it will enhance now we've, what we presented to you tonight. And I think all of our goals are, are to make sure this is a safe uh, accommodation. And I think what's been suggested is really to enhance the safety of what we propose as a design.
Very good. All right. Thank you. Um, so with that, I'm going to, um, revive and pick up where we left off with questions from the board uh, with respect to the commentary and the revisions and the updates that we heard from both, um, pedestrian associates as well as in response, uh, by our, uh, peer review consultants, uh, with Tech. Anyone wish to continue? Yes.
Guess I'll address these first to, uh, Mr. Dirk, are you there?
I am, yes.
Uh, I must say before I begin that, that's a little disconcerting directing my questions to a microphone. Uh, and disappointed that you're not here. Uh, there are many of us who have not had the opportunity to question you, and I find it distressing and disappointing. But with that, I'll do my best, given the fact that you couldn't find the time to be here to receive. Um, I appreciate your perspective on the, uh, uh, mitigation circumstance factors here that, that seem to be going my, well, uh, along with addressing any concerns we might have. And that seems to be a position uh, that is endorsed by our peer review experts as well. However, I, I guess you'll agree with me that uh, all of those mitigation fat mitigation factors really are driven by the underlying assumptions and calculations, uh, that drive the traffic number. Is that correct?
They're, they're derived, I would say more, they're derived based on the traffic numbers, yes, but they're also derived on actual usage of the roadway. So it's not, you know, if, if what you're asking about is, are these derived based on theoretical projections? Um, the answer is no. These, these improvements are something that we've discussed are needed independent of the project. Uh, the project is facilitating these improvements actually getting done.
Okay. Let, let me just make sure I understand your testimony. You are stating that no improvements are needed uh, at Low Street, uh, that are occasioned by the development of this project. Is that your testimony?
As it relates to the impacts of the project directly requiring improvements to take place, that's, that is my testimony, yes.
No, you didn't answer my question. There, there is going to be an increase in traffic. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. We can, we'll get into those numbers, but there will be an increase.
That's correct.
Is it your testimony that the improvements that you have just proposed at the corner of Low Street and the entrance are not occasioned by this development?
The improvements that we are proposing are not needed for the development to occur on this property. The development could take place on this property without these improvements being in place.
Okay. All right. I just want to make that clear. So none of these mitigation, mitigation factors in your view are necessary to accommodate this project?
That's correct.
And you were simply offering them as an accommodation to the city. Is that your testimony?
My testimony of these, these would result in a betterment that will, as I described, as it relates to the fair share calculation. They are led to the overall flow of traffic and the safety of pedestrians in the area that's desirable, independent of this project. They do derive, the project will derive a benefit from them. That is, that's correct. But are they needed for this project to occur at this location? The answer is no. They are not needed for the project to occur at this location.
Okay. So they are not need, so there is no need for any enhanced safety considerations at the corner of Low Street and the entrance to the, the plaza. Is that your testimony?
Not as a result of the project being constructed at this location.
Okay. I just want to make sure I understand your testimony here. Um, so let me go back to the way I originally tried to phrase this. Perhaps in our fall, I'm not a traffic engineer. Um, so you identified a number of mitigating factors, both in the traffic design and in the parking design, which are, which find their genesis in the increased traffic derived from this project. Isn't that correct?
That is not correct.
Well, please correct me.
So to be very clear, and we've stated this on the record, and your review consultant has confirmed this as well. The project, the creation of housing at this specific location does not result in an impact in increased delays or vehicle queuing at any intersection as currently designed, that requires mitigation to add capacity to accommodate the additional trips from this project. Number one, number two, there are no high crash locations, either as they relate to severity of crashes happening or the number of crashes in relation to the volume of traffic going through intersections that requires improvements to accommodate this project at this location. So from a capacity perspective and a safety perspective, both as I've cited in my testimony in our reports and is reviewed by your consultant, there is not a need for physical improvements to the transportation infrastructure to accommodate this project.
Okay. Just want to make sure I understand your testimony. I'm not picking a fight with you. I just want to understand your testimony.
I, I appreciate that.
There's not a question, folks, but we'll be just wait for my questions. So, um, I'd like to look at some of the numbers in that, in the exhibit that you, uh, walked us through, uh, if you don't mind. I guess I'll start in the summary of findings and the third bullet. Do you have that in front of you?
Yes.
Okay. So I guess before I, uh, ask you to help me on this, I assume that in calculating this number or arriving at this number, you follow, we follow generally accepted traffic engineering guidelines and principles. Is that fair to say?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, and I take it back. Our peer review expert applies those same guidelines and criteria, uh, as it relates to their review.
That's correct.
So you stay here, your report states. And by the way, I think, were you primarily responsible for the oversight and preparation of all the materials that were submitted here?
That's correct.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we're talking to the right guy. So there's a number there of fourteen thousand one seventy, which this report states is an approximate number of vehicles on Low Street on an average weekday.
That's correct.
Okay. So can you tell me how you arrived at that number?
So that number is arrived at by actual traffic counts. So we perform what's known as an automatic traffic recorder count. In this case, the count's done over, it was done over a three day period. So it was a Thursday, Friday, Saturday. This is the Thursday volume as measured on the roadway. And I believe this was a a May traffic count. So it's fourteen thousand one hundred seventy vehicles as physically measured on the roadway, two way traffic.
So I take it that there's some level of professional judgment that you used in selecting the day and the month to calculate this number?
Correct. We, the traffic counts are done on what's known as an average weekday. An average weekday is a a Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday, because as I mentioned at the bottom of this, traffic fluctuates Monday through Friday. We don't use Monday counts. We don't use Friday counts because they are generally either low or abnormal in the case of a Friday. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday are considered an average weekday. Thursday is typically the peak of those three days and the fourteen thousand one hundred seventy was measured on on a Thursday. We do look at seasonality of traffic counts, and that was one of the things that we had spoken about probably, I think it was the last hearing, actually. Where we look at if we do traffic counts in in May or August, how do they compare to what's known as average month conditions? And we are required by the state to look at what's known as an average month condition. And so May is considered an above average month condition. So the numbers are slightly higher than would occur in an average, which might be in April or March or a September traffic month. So May would be considered slightly above average. And so this would be fourteen thousand one hundred seventy vehicles on a Thursday, a high traffic day of the week on an above average month.
I don't want to get too much of the leads with this, but I I appreciate that. If you're relative, they've been leads a little bit in terms of this. But I want to ask one overarching question here. Is there a margin of error built into this number in any way, shape, or form?
So generally, the generally, the because going back to where you started, which is kind of the theory, let's say, of the of the analysis that's done. So the couple of things to consider in that is number one, we're looking at a condition seven years in the future as we're looking at what the impacts of the project is. That that projection has a couple of things in it. It has other projects in the area that Andy identifies for us, but it also has a growth rate. That growth rate, as we're looking at it over seven years, I think we applied a 1% growth rate over a seven year period that's compounded annually. What I would say is that the regional planning agency that develops the traffic model for use in determining when roadway improvements are necessary at a state level would tell you a 1% growth rate is extremely high. And that their modeling that they use, the central transportation planning staff suggests that that growth rate is less than half a percent as they look at long range traffic projections. So that's the first area where there's fluff or some added capacity put into the numbers in terms of what we're looking at. So that that provides a factor of safety in there and that we're looking at numbers that are probably inflated from what they will actually be. The the second margin of safety, for lack of a better term, is the actual trip estimates for the project. The way those numbers are developed or the trip generation numbers from the Institute of Transportation Engineers tends to be on the high side in terms of overestimating trips. So there's also a little bit of a factor of safety as it relates to that. I would say the factor of safety is more so built into that growth rate so that we're overestimating the what we think the future numbers will be. And so that does provide some, you know, some reasonableness in terms of looking at these improvements and looking at longevity as it relates to impact of the project, but as it relates to capacity in that we would expect that there'll actually be more capacity to accommodate the project than what we're showing in our transportation analysis. And that's quite common.
All right. Well, I appreciate it. So I think everybody understands here. Your number of fourteen thousand one seventy reflects a margin of error. Would you say?
So the fourteen thousand one hundred seventy is an actual count. I don't think that that necessarily is a margin of error unless you wanted to say it's a higher than average month. So most, the majority of the year, the traffic volume is actually lower than the fourteen thousand one hundred and seventy. So we're basing our analysis on a a high month of the year rather than a typical or average month.
I may have misunderstood. I thought you told me that we also take into account the growth over seven years of 1%.
Yes, as we're looking at the impacts of the project, that's how we're doing it. We're actually looking at, instead of fourteen thousand one hundred seventy, we would grow that number 1% per year for seven years. And that's where we're looking at the impact of the project. So this number would actually get, it gets larger when we're looking at the impact of the project. But from the standpoint of presenting what the percent increase in traffic the project represents to your point of saying, rather than looking at projections, what is the volume today and how are you impacting the conditions that exist out there today? And that's what the purpose of this was to say is that we expect that it will be over what's there today. It's a 5% increase. If I looked at it seven years in the future, it's probably, you know, closer to four to four and a half percent increase rather than the 5%.
Okay. All right. And you would agree with me that it would be appropriate for the zoning board to consider future growth and analyze it in some patient.
Absolutely. As you're looking at it, that's correct. I mean, our goal really is, yeah, do we want it to work today? Absolutely. But that's not really what we want. We want to make sure that the, because the project's not going to be dropped, you know, right in place tomorrow. It's going to take time to build it. So as you're making a decision as it relates to the project and its impacts, you want to be be forward looking. And I think that's what you're doing. And that then really, I appreciate your questions because that's what the probing is at. It's really about the board building a project at this location and not wanting people to turn back and say, well, how could you do that? Because it's a mess out there. And what we're trying to do is say it's not going to be because these are the factors of safety that we built into this.
Okay. I appreciate that. So let me just see if we can agree on a couple things. To design this with an app to engage in a traffic engineering and design study which reflects some future growth, you would increase the number fourteen thousand one seventy over seven years by five to seven to have a max of 10%. Is that accurate?
Correct.
Okay. Fine. So my question then that I put to you is assuming such growth are the remediation factors, particularly on Low Street adequate to address that level of growth?
Yes, it is. And I think probably the most important thing where we would show issues is if you have, if you have, if you're through volumes on Low Street increase, as you've said, seven to 10%, let's say, over that seven year period. Where the issue becomes is it's either at intersections or where you have conflicting turning movements. And so as we focus on what we've developed for an improvement program for the project is the impedance of flow is the left turn movement, the increase in the left turn movement trying to get into the property and how that left turn movement absent a left turn lane, what does it do to backups of traffic that are traveling eastbound on on Low Street? And and as those through volumes grow, the impact of that left turning movement going into the center driveway becomes enhanced, meaning that if we don't have the turn lane, it would start to cause backups toward the signal at Story Avenue. And that's why what seems to be a minor improvement here is actually a very significant improvement as it relates to the flow of traffic and looking at the increase in volumes along Low Street.
Okay, I just want to be clear on this. It's your testimony that the safety mitigation factors on Low Street that you've proposed tonight are adequate to address seven year, the seven years of projected growth in traffic as you would, in your expert opinion, professional expert opinion.
Yes, absolutely. And I think the added benefit, I think, as your consultant has mentioned, is this island, it actually introduces a little bit of traffic calming as well. So I think you, you, there's some significant enhancements that this results in terms of improvements that, yes, even looking seven years in the future, this is, this is an improvement that not only enhances traffic flow, it improves safety for pedestrians crossing at this location. And it does also introduce a little bit of a traffic calming feature in this area as well.
Okay, thanks. Let me ask you move on to another number. And that, and you mentioned it in passing here in our discussion. And that's the next number there, which is the addition of seven hundred and four vehicles on an average weekday to Low Street. Tell me how you calculated that number? And what assumptions went into the calculation?
Sure. And so the seven, the number that, where the seven hundred and four came from is that it's the trip generation calculation for the project, which was developed based on data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers for multifamily residential buildings done based on studies of similar type of developments throughout the country. And so applying knowing the number of residential units and the multifamily residential building at this location, we can estimate the amount of trips that will be generated based on counts done at at similar type of multifamily residential buildings. And so we developed that trip estimate, the seven hundred and four actually represents the portion of those trips that would be oriented to and from Low Street. So we're predicting that the project's going to generate more than seven hundred and four vehicles, but seven hundred and four vehicles represents eighty three percent of the traffic the project would generate. That will be on Low Street. So eighty three percent of the total volume of traffic produced by the project will be on Low Street. That's the seven hundred and four number. So that was developed based on trip estimates from similar type of multifamily residential buildings.
Yeah, I just want to ask you a little bit about the source that you rely upon here for me specific as to what it is and how old it is.
So this is based on, again, the, it's the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual. That data was published in 2021. That's the manual that this was used. There's been a recent update that was just published last month, so August of 2025. That includes new data as well. What I would mention as we're looking at this data, which is based on the 2021 Trip Generation Manual, that is all pre-COVID numbers. So I think that's a very important point to put to these numbers. And as you're saying, how we're estimating what the number is and what the factor of safety may be. As we all know, what has happened since COVID is there's this larger percentage of work from home numbers. So what we're seeing in terms of the new data that's come out is that in general, the numbers have either stayed the same or they're actually gone down a little bit because the amount of traffic that's produced has gone down because of that work from home phenomenon, which is now captured in the latest edition of Trip Generation. So
Okay, let me just interrupt. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure. Are you telling me that the updated August 25 data would result in a lower number here than the seven hundred and four?
It would either be, yeah, would be either be the same or lower.
Okay. I'm now scrolling down to the next bullet. Many of these questions are saying, I'm just trying to go behind these numbers and ask you to provide the assumption and the professional expertise and support behind that since everything we've heard regarding the mitigation factors, assuming these numbers are from all human or peer review consultant, I embrace these numbers. So this bullet, which talks about time added vehicle for two to three minutes peak hours. How did you calculate that?
So the one where it's one added vehicle every two to three minutes?
Correct.
Yeah. So what we did is, and Andy, I don't know if you could go ahead. There was a slide where I had the the traffic turning movements. That next one. The next slide, Andy, I think has it. Thank you, Andy. I appreciate that. So what we did in terms of looking at the critical movements is we looked at the left turn movement going into the driveway. And we also looked at the through movements along Low Street. So those are what we said would be the critical movement. So as you look at the numbers here, the highest volume of left turning vehicles going into the Low Street driveway was twenty two vehicles. So during the week, it's the weekday evening peak hour when people are coming home from work. We would add twenty two vehicles to that left turn movement going into that driveway. So that that's considered a critical movement. So that would be it's one added vehicle every two and a half minutes to that specific movement there.
I'm sorry, maybe I wasn't very arguable. I'm asking you, what were the, what were the assumptions you made in coming up with one vehicle for over two to three minutes? Where do those numbers come from?
So we start with those trip generation numbers. So if we looked at it, we said during each of the peak periods, the project's going to generate seventy three vehicle trips. A portion are entering, a portion are exiting. So we start with the trip estimates of seventy three vehicles.
So provide me with the assumptions or the support for that number of seventy three.
Those are based, so similar to the seven hundred and four we spoke about, that's a trip generation number based on the data from the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So just as, just as we can estimate the daily number, we can estimate each of the numbers during each of the peak hours of the day.
All right. All I'm asking is to give me and the audience some measure of comfort that you have applied generally accepted valid and appropriate criteria and information to come up with these numbers which are driving this decision making process.
Sure. No, and I appreciate that. And I also appreciate your comment of not being able to be there in person because if I were, I would raise my right hand and I would say to you, I've been a traffic engineer, practicing traffic engineer for almost thirty five years. This is all I do. And this is what I've been doing for thirty five years. I, just as your consultant, have significant experience in conducting these studies. In fact, I've represented the city in conducting peer reviews for the planning board in a number of instances for projects within the city whereby the city relies upon my expertise in advising the city that applicants such as this applicant have conducted these studies and done these trip generation calculations in accordance with all accepted practices and standards. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, as well as all of the New England states. I'm also a certified professional traffic operations engineer by the Institute of Transportation Engineers. And I'm a fellow of the Institute of Transportation Engineers. So, you know, I I mentioned that by way of just saying to you, I've been doing this for a very long time. I am the managing partner of the company that I work at. I would not be presenting this to you if in any way I was not able to represent to you that this has been done in accordance with all accepted practices. And and I've stamped the report and certified that it's been done that way. But beyond that, you've had a similarly credentialed peer of mine review this, and he has told you the same thing and hopefully is giving you the same level of comfort.
Okay, I want to, I want to, I mean, I want to hear it. I want to just let that through. Mr. Ben, I want to also, I want to make sure that we that we pull the with respect to the last question or see if it dovetails into any other members' questions. But I want to sort of indulge your mind to its conclusion. So I I want to make sure you have heard an answer or if you've not heard an answer that feels responsive, I would, I would invite you to re pose it to
Mr. Dirk, the answer is once. Mr. Dirk. Oh, this is on the question.
Okay, so just, Mr. Dirk, just, I did not challenge your professional qualifications. And but I thank you for your summary of your resume. I accept you as an expert and I have from the, from the beginning.
I guess I'll just I can back his cause and, no, no, no. I just want, I'd like to ask you, just on the last page of your report, the notion of a fair share contribution.
Yes.
I, I just I guess can we agree that the notion of what is fair is somewhat of a subjective judgment call?
Not as it relates to a fair share contribution for transportation projects. This is, this is an accepted standard that is not only applied to comprehensive permit projects, but it would say in my testimony before Land Court on numerous projects as well as Superior Court, this is a standard that's been upheld as it relates to determining fair share contributions for projects that have impacts on the transportation infrastructure that are not necessarily impacts that are directly derived as a result of the construction of the project. So this is accepted, not just by my, you know, stating this to you. This is actually Land Court and Superior Court in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and I've testified to these types of scenarios.
I'm not stating that it was not accepted. And I appreciate that it is an acceptable methodology. My question simply is this, isn't the notion of fair share a subjective consideration that the city may have a different view of?
Not in terms of its calculation, no. But to be clear, the discussion really with the city is what is the desirable improvement? And what is the cost of that improvement? So if that's, if that's what you're asking in terms of what is, what are you, what is the fair share? What are you fair sharing? What is the projects, you know, with quotes around that? That I would say, yes, that is something that is typically worked on between the applicant and the city. In this case, the city has at least expressed a desire that a signal at some point may be desirable at this location. So because of that, that's what we've applied the fair share discussion toward something like that. But it is, it's generally something where the the municipality or the state decide what an appropriate improvement measure is, and then the fair share calculation is applied to that defined improvement.
I got that, but I'm just suggesting that it would be fair and appropriate for the zoning board or the city to consider other factors aside from ones that you use in your calculus to determine what a fair share is.
So those factors are not, those factors need to be objective and not subjective, is what I would say. You can't, you can't have a subjective determination of what an, what an impact may be. It needs to be substantive and demonstrable. Meaning that it can't just be, we have, you know, we have a feeling of what, you know, an impact may be. It's got to be something that's measurable so that it can be presented and say, this is a measured impact of the project toward which a fair share contribution then can be developed.
Other measurable impacts and obligations and a responsibility of the city would be fair to consider determining this fair share?
Well, I think, I think what the reason that you've got two professionals here essentially is what we've done is I've quantified what the impact of the project will be in a very subjective and demonstrable manner. You've then had a review consultant has looked at those numbers, and I think he said a couple of times that I don't need any additional analysis. I agree with it with what has been defined as the measurable, demonstrable impact of that project. So could the city have another view of what that is? They certainly can, but it's got to be something where it is, again, measurable, quantifiable, and demonstrable based on the information that's been provided.
That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Dirk. You've been very helpful.
Thank you. I appreciate, I very much appreciate the questions.
Thank you, Mr. Dirk, and stand by for, we have additional questions. Mr. Swanton. And if I might just take a moment, members of the audience, especially those in the back, I know that I can hear our members here. The acoustics are very different in a big room. Just quick show of hands, is anyone having difficulty hearing any of us? Or anyone with respect to questions or dialogue? Because we'll make an effort to try to speak up if that's the case. I know it's, can be hard. I don't see any hands. So, so far, so good? Great. Thank you for the feedback, and we'll swan to the place.
Yeah, I'd like to start actually with our own, here at this all, a couple of questions for you, if you might. You pointed out that they've made significant changes in the last several days. Things that you've been recommending for all time, and I agree, that's a good thing. But there's one that you've been recommending since the beginning that I would like to focus on. Which you said, you just quote your report, the installation of a traffic signal, particularly a couple little left, new left turn lane will provide superior safety-related characteristics for all left turning traffic entering and exiting Port Plaza. Also provides a superior level of traffic control for pedestrians well and beyond the R R R F B here. And finally, the traffic signal will also create occasional gaps in traffic that would benefit other unsignalized driveways along Low Street. I assume you still believe in all that, right? That is, that's, you still, that's still your position, right?
That is still my position. And I think there's other texts that I've provided either in that letter or prior letter, but that the traffic signals, the panacea for all things traffic.
Right, no, I understand that. So my first question is, my next question is, you mentioned installation of a traffic, with a new left turn lane. The left turn lane that's on the board up there, does that count as the new left turn lane? Does that get us partway there?
Certainly does.
Okay, that's good. Now further down, you say, when we do the this fair share thing that my colleague, Mr. Bennet over here was talking about, you say, however, the concept of a fair share contribution is peculiar because the traffic signal would be overwhelmingly justified to service only Port Plaza's traffic with very little influence from Haji's tunnel business on the opposite side. I mean, I assume when you say Port Plaza traffic, you're talking about the whole project that the owner owns here, not just the housing development, the shaws and all that stuff. Right? That is
That is correct.
So, and you just talk from all about it. I don't often see the word peculiar. So how is it peculiar that they are proposing a fair share arrangement?
So the term fair share, if it was in context of solely a traffic signal at the center driveway, then as I said, I think it was last week at the meeting, I wouldn't recommend that the city spend money to signalize a private facility driveway in this. My original comment about the fair share was not about a signal. It was about other mobility considerations for multimodal trips like walking and biking. That would be to and from the east along Low Street that the residential project will generate for walking and biking trips, different than what is there today as a plaza. My suggestion of 75,000 was not as analytical based on some $1.5 million project. It was what in my experience of looking at applying a reasonable contribution, not the term fair share, that's, that's the peculiar part is that if it's in terms of what might be a contribution from the applicant to work towards either designing or permitting or construction of some greater good of pedestrian bicycle improvements to and from the east, then that could be constituted, in my mind, a fair share. The, the idea that the 75 was related to like signalization of the driveway, that was not the intent of my original comment. And I do believe that, A, Mr. Dirk and I agree that it is warranted today based on the, without contemplating the project. The way we've suggested fashioning the access from the garage and all that was to not overly exacerbate the traffic conditions at the center driveway. My suggestion was to push as many as you can out to the easterly driveway for multiple reasons, not the least of which was having less congestion rate in the center of the site. So this, the fair share, the number is the same, ironically. It's just that my suggestion of the 75,000 would be essentially a token of the applicant's contribution towards mitigating bicycle possession trips to and from the east, not anything related to potential future signalization of the driveway.
Yeah, I'm sorry, just to send this, the applicant team suggested they'd be willing to consider a monitoring introduce to the city, it will construct a traffic signal period. However, it becomes a, the fair share track combination is peculiar because the traffic table would be all one justified in Port Plaza traffic. That just seems like you're basically saying, I kind of agree over here, that it's fair share seems a little odd when one person owns the whole complex in there that all the traffic goes into. They're now adding housing, and they're somehow claiming that all the traffic's due to that owner.
And that's, and that's why I stated the week ago.
Yeah, okay. That's what I mean.
So the terminology is peculiar, how it's applied, but my suggestions are that the fair share, in my mind, the way I intended it in my original letters was as an offset commitment or used by the city in advancing other future bicycle and pedestrian commission commitments, designs, et cetera. Off-site earlier to me.
Yes, yes. I hear you, but that's not what these sentences said. But anyway, thank you for clarifying. I have a couple of questions for our person.
Yes.
I wanted to ask you as well. I think it was put most eloquently last meeting by one of our city councilors who said it does seem a lot that somebody who owns that whole traffic, that whole parcel there with shaws and everything is now putting in housing, and all of the benefit of the traffic signal benefits them. Why would they only pay 5%? I just, I just rather than repeat everything you said to us earlier. If you could address the way the counselor put it, I appreciate our understanding because this is, it's not like you have a different housing owner than the rest of the plaza. It's all one owner. Would that change anything?
So I think one of the ways to look at it is, I think, what your consultant was saying, which is who does, who benefits from the installation of a traffic signal at that location? So who benefits from it is the traffic exiting the Port Plaza, and I think that's to your point. Who does not benefit from the installation of a traffic signal at the driveway? The motorists that are driving along Low Street, they don't benefit one iota from the installation of a traffic signal along that, that street. So I think when you look at it from that context is really that, are we going to introduce an added delay to the motorists on Low Street to allow for traffic to get out of the plaza? Because that's what we're talking about. And so what we've done, and the reason why neither consultant has said to you that it's a good idea to put a signal at this location at this time is for that direct reason. Because what, what we have come up with in order to address this issue of movement of traffic and safety of pedestrians and, and traffic frankly, along Low Street is introducing the left turn lane, which is not there today, which directly results in a benefit to the flow of traffic along in Low Street. But beyond that, it addresses the impact of this project, which as a result of comments from your consultant, we have eliminated traffic exiting the driveway to the center Port Plaza driveway that comes out to Low Street. We've moved that traffic either to the east driveway or we're allowing a right turn back into the Port Plaza. So going back to, if you go back to your, the original comments from your consultant, that was, you know, to his point, several versions removed from the plan that we have before you tonight, which has addressed the impact of the project, added safety enhancements to this intersection without impacting the flow of traffic in a negative manner along Low Street, which is not the same as would occur if, if a traffic signal was installed at this intersection. And I, and I think the other key point of that, and your consultant said it very well, and we raised it in our letter, just because you meet the warrants for a traffic signal at any intersection does not mean that it's an appropriate traffic control solution. And that, that's very clear in the federal highway, the manual and uniform traffic control devices. It says specifically there that just because you meet a warrant doesn't mean it's the best solution. And what the two of us have said to you is, this is a better solution.
Mr. Dirk, if I might, pardon me, sir, I'm just going to interrupt for a moment. Just because I want to try to keep us on track, I believe if I could ask you to try to tailor, there's a question that I think Mr. Swanton has asked that we're all sort of waiting to see if you could try to address and respond to as directly as possible. I understand that there's, it may require additional color and explanation, but if I could just ask you to try to focus your response to the question so that we can try to see if we can incrementally advance the discussion and the knowledge forward. So, Mr. Swanton, if you could just reframe that question, and Mr. Dirk, if you could just kindly listen, please, and try to just address the, the question as
crisply as possible. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. My apologies. I have to agree with my colleague over here. It's really tough. One of the most important meetings I've had in my five years on the zoning board of the field to talk to somebody who's not in the room is really difficult. But let me try my question. It's really about ownership. My question was, the same owner owns all the buildings, that all the traffic goes in and out of here. Everybody agrees we already do traffic light already. City engineers said it as well. Now we're adding, you know, 400 people living there, making it worse. And my question is very simply, don't, please don't answer, I've heard all the other things you said. The fact that it's the same owner who owns everything in there, doesn't that change anything?
It has no, it does not change my opinion or your consultant's opinion as it relates to the applicability of a traffic signal being installed at this intersection. It does not.
Hey, thank you for addressing the question without going on to other things. I, I have another question. I want to follow up on Mr. Bennet's question about future growth. You know, those of us who shop anew before, we have a choice of going to Market Basket or Shaw's. And for the last quite a few years, the Market Basket parking lot is chock a lot full, and Shaw's parking lot is quite easy to find a space because not a lot of people go there. Now, Market Basket's going through some turmoil right now. And if that was to change, and Shaw's parking lot was as full as Market Basket's parking lot, I suspect that 14,000 number you put up there would go up a lot. And there'd be even more pressure on having a light there. And now adding 400 people living there adds even more to it. So how is your analysis taken into consideration, something like that? Because it's if you go look at Google Maps, you see all the cars filling up the Market Basket lot, very few in this lot. I'm very concerned that we're not protecting ourselves for the future. Could you please talk to, you know, can you assume Shaw's is going to be as underpopulated than the parking lot? Definitely, I guess you have, if you just increased it 1% a year.
So if your question is, if I shop at Market Basket today, and then because theoretically, or we know that there's turmoil taking place, although that hasn't affected their sales yet, that I'm now going to go to Shaw's because of the turmoil at Market Basket. So what I would say to you is that if I'm driving along Low Street and I'm going to Market Basket today, I'm still going to drive on Low Street to go to Shaw's. So I'm still in the 14,170 vehicles. It's just that I'm not going to go through the Story Avenue Low Street intersection, which is an improvement. And instead, I'm going to make the right hand turn and go into the Shaw's Plaza driveway. Yes, I will then be a left turn movement coming out of the center driveway, presumably. However, I'm also not a through movement on Low Street that inhibits the ability of someone to make a left hand turn. So volumes go down in one direction, they increase in another direction. So it's a way of saying, if the traffic is out there, and the presumption that you're asking for is that I don't shop at Market Basket, now I'm going to shop at Shaw's. I'm already driving in that area. So the overall volume of traffic doesn't change. It's just which driveway they happen to be using.
I'm really just asking a very simple yes or no question. If all of a sudden Shaw's gets a lot If all of a sudden Shaw's gets a lot more popular, won't there be more traffic going in and out of Low Street?
No, presumably it would not, because if I'm using Low Street to get the Market Basket, I'm still gonna use Low Street to go to Shaw's.
Okay, good. Many of us go down High Street and then cut down Atkinson and go in. But anyway, I'll let that rest. I I have one more question, then I'll give some time to my colleagues. If you go back to the slide about the hawk, which I think was, uh, I want to refer earlier, earlier on, I think it's like slide three. It's three, right? Slide three. Oh, I didn't realize. Yeah, I think it's one of my hawk. That doesn't say hawk. My flash should be there. And that just says RF party. I want to see this slide three, please.
It's way up at the beginning, Andy. I apologize.
Yeah, right there. Slide three.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, I apologize for the text.
The second bullet, the second bullet. Last time you guys were here, you said you do an RF RF F D beacon, and many of the people in the audience said, you know, those aren't all that safe because people go, food, Mr. Some blinking yellow light. And we talked about hawks last time. Here on the slide, it says you would do either an RF being or a hawk. Are you leaving that option up to us, assuming we don't get our traffic signal and we have to fall back on this? Do we have the option of picking either one or is that your choice?
So we've we've offered either solution to the city. And so it's it's if the city desires one or the other one, you know, we will go along with what the city wants because we have, the city's gonna issue the permit and approve the construction drawings, which is what I think your consultant was alluding to in terms of some refinements. So to the extent that the city engineer, um, desires one or the other, that's what we've suggested is that we're open to either solution. I personally, and I think your consultant would also opine that the hawk is may not be the appropriate solution here. So but but that aside, we've committed as a part of this project to put either one of those traffic control devices in place, subject to the city's review and approval.
Okay, thank you. That's my last question.
Thank you, Mr. Dirk. Thank you, Mr. Swanton. Further questions?
Can I just say one thing, Mr. Chair, because I think it's really important and perhaps your counsel can opine here. The reason that you look at the project alone is because that is the application that's before you. It doesn't matter that Port Plaza happens to be owned by the same person. It could be a different applicant. The forty B law says you look at the application before you and the impacts of that application. That's what you look at, and that's the simple answer to why the analysis goes to the impacts of the project and not the existing condition of Port Plaza.
Thank you, Attorney Mead. Attorney Orson, uh, anything you wish to sort of add to that for as we continue with questions?
My 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 suggestion would be if people want guidance from counsel, let me questions and I'll imply a response in writing. Okay, I think verbal response is on the spot. They also do that. They they sent us a six, seven page memo that had, you know, several hours of work, so I'm not getting this one on the spot. But anybody with any questions, um, about how to apply the regs, the standards, uh, be sent in to me and I think we can do that. So that would do deliberations, you're appropriately guided. That that said, I mean, you ask me questions, I'm gonna give you straight needle answers. It's not advocacy. I'm gonna tell them how I read the regs, what I know about the cases, okay? And maybe, uh, Attorney Mead's questions is one that you would ask.
I think that's, um, I think that's wise advice. Uh, it also protects the record for reflection and reference report and for members of the public to reflect and refer as well. Uh, so thank you for that. We'll do that with questions. Uh, and then any responses to any questions that we have will for share, uh, and make part of, uh, make part of our public record. Continuation of questions with this chair.
Yeah. Andy, could you go to the last drawing? It shows the, uh, bus where the raised front line. So that lower drawing is really big. Maybe it's the top part on my presentation.
Yeah, sorry. I can act if I spoke with a version, it's probably easier to see.
Yeah, that. I guess I'm wrong, Mr. Dirk. Um, Low Street's really wide today and can accommodate bike traffic comfortably. If you look at the far right side, you go even more right, blocks it. So yeah, drift right. Uh, the two lanes are thirteen feet. There's a six-foot lane going westbound and a four-foot lane going eastbound for bike traffic. By installing all of our, uh, painted medians, the raised crosswalk and then the painted medians on the west side, we choke everything down. A poor biker coming from the east is gonna go from a six-foot wide bike lane down to two feet with a smaller travel lane for the car. It's going from thirteen to eleven. And it happens on the other side, even worse. Um, is that safe? Is that, does that make sense from a traffic human element? That we're gonna ask bike riders to shrink down to two feet with the with the car trying to move over at the same time because you just lost two feet? Uh, just from a safety thing, it just seems like it's way out of character that that road should be wider there. We're gonna suggest putting in a sidewalk with handicap ramps and a raised block in the middle. Just seems like that needs to be at least six feet wide. Thoughts?
So it does not need to be six feet wide. We can, we can look at it and see if there's the ability to provide a the the bicycle accommodations through there if there's enough room to be able to do that. Um, so what I would say to you is there are as wide shoulders out there today, they can be used by bicyclists. There are not bicycle lanes so designated that are out there. Um, so I think part of what the city is looking for for long-term improvements and what your consultant was talking about with the suggestion for the seventy-five thousand dollar contribution is the city is desirable of having some improvements in the area for bicycles. And so that would be the long-term improvement project that would be go above and beyond what you see here today. So yes, the shoulders are getting narrower. At the point where the shoulders narrow, we could put signs in or work with your consultant to say basically at that point, similar to right turn lanes at intersections, the bicyclist then shifts over and is in the traveled way and then shifts back over. So that is something we can look at in the refinements of the design.
So that would be phase two. In other words, you do it the way it is now and then the city would come along, chop up the median, do something to make it wider?
You wouldn't necessarily chop the median up. What you would do is modify the shoulder areas to be able to create. You'd preserve the median because to your to your consultant's point, you want to maintain the crown light of the roadway and then you'd shift the curb line to the north and to the south, preserve what's in the center.
Well, I guess what I'm asking is you have a sidewalk, if you will, on both sides with a wheelchair ramp. Phase two would require them to cut into those. And then I think a wheelchair ramp with a drop off is is not the not a comfortable solution. To make that wider, you'd have to cut that that concrete.
You, well, you you'd fit, yeah, you'd physically remove it and you would widen the road and then put a new sidewalk in is what you would do.
All right. All right. Thank you. Also, thank you. Thank you. Further questions?
Shalom. Oh, yeah, thank you. Um, could we talk a little bit about the pedestrian traffic that would be generated by the project? I think we spent a lot of time thinking about the cars generated by the project, but we haven't really spent a lot of time talking about pedestrian traffic generated by the project or bicycle project, uh, bicycle traffic generated by the project. Because we're looking at what, like five hundred residents in, uh, approximately five hundred residents in the project? Is that a reasonable number, Mr. Dirk?
Uh, I couldn't, I wouldn't be able to opine as that's not in my expertise in terms of the number of residents per unit. Um, maybe another member of the team, I can talk to you about, I can certainly talk to you about what we expect for pedestrians and bicycles because that was a part of our assessment.
Right, okay. Um, yeah, so you had in one of your earlier reports, um, you had the chip, the trip generation chart. Correct?
Yes.
And that dealt with automobile trips generated by the project. It also dealt with pedestrian and bicycle trips generated by the project, correct?
That's correct.
And was those numbers were calculated in the same way as the automobile, uh, trips?
Slightly, they started with the same parameter, but they're based on U.S. census data for residents of the city of Newportport in terms of how many people walk or bike as their primary commuting mode and that that's how those numbers are developed. So it's based on census data for the city.
Okay, so that, uh, if I'm hearing you correctly, your testimony is that that those numbers, right? The, what is it? Uh, average weekday daily pedestrian entering and exiting would be some totally eighty-two, but those are only people that use uh, walking and bicycling as their mean, as their main way of going from, uh, from and to work?
Correct. Their primary commuting mode as reported on the census, yes.
So people who are who are just residents in the project, people who are retired or children or work from home people, they're not counted in that number. So it's possible, and we don't know this because it's not in your number, that those people could be going for walks, uh, at lunch or running errands or doing something else that that, uh, that is done as pedestrian, correct?
That's correct. There there's probably, there's probably a smaller subset of the numbers that are here, but yeah, but if you're suggesting it's like double this, I would say that's highly unlikely. And doubling this means fourteen.
Um, you gotta, hold on, hold on. This is glad if I can, if I, Mr. Dirk, we're we're gonna ask you, if I can ask you, please. Going forward, we're gonna insist that all consultants be in the room. We're not gonna schedule these meetings. Um, I'm not sure I will have the luxury of being able to indulge how that impacts, uh, you know, the the convenience factor, but this is very difficult for all of us because we can't, we can't use nonverbal and and body language to interact and move quickly. I need you, Mr. Dirk, please, with respect, sir. I need you to listen to the questions and respond to them. If you need to refer to attorney need, um, or consult, that's fine, but we need to move through this material. I'm absolutely, um, beleaguered in my mind, just as a one-voting member's ability to follow along. I consider myself sometimes a half-sharp pencil and I'm finding it challenging to stay to stay sentient in the material. And it's not because you aren't an expert. Um, there are lots of experts here. It's because it is, um, it is, it is very, very wide in the material that's being proffered to us. So as we listen and distill these questions, I will respectfully insist, adamantly insist with respect that the questions that are directed be responded to as sharply as possible so that we can follow along with additional questions. Is that, is that fair, sir?
It is, and I appreciate that.
I referred you, you're the, you're the voice, um, you're you're the voice in the room, um, um, not to, you know, not to further sort of, uh, you know, put you on the spot, but I I just want to make sure that this is workable for everyone so that we can move forward. Mr. Delisle is, I'm gonna give the floor back to Mr. Delisle. He's gonna ask this question again, and then I, please, I'll ask you kindly just listen and then, um, try to respond uh, as best you can and then allow a follow-on question that may be cumulative by Mr. Delisle or any other member so that we can, we can aggregate the material and, um, and gain the information we're trying to to gain as a board. Thank you, sir, for that. And, uh, Mr. Delisle, please.
Yeah, thank you. Uh, so I I think what I was asking was that all those trips that we were just talking about pedestrian slash bicycle trips, those are all generated by the project, correct?
That's correct.
And the same would be the case for, uh, transit trips, right? Those would be people that are going to the the Miva bus. Is that what what you would consider a transit trip?
That's correct.
Okay, uh, so we have forty transit trips a day um, according to your, uh, trip generation chart. And those forty trips per day would be people that use the Miva as their main, uh, means of transportation for getting to work or from work, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And again, people could take the Miva bus to go to the the hospital or to the train station to go in, to go into Boston or to take it to go downtown or take it for other, uh, recreational means, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and so to take the Miva bus to go east, you had, you would have to cross Low Street, correct?
Correct.
Okay, um, so, and again, all that traffic, all those pedestrian trips, uh, the transit trips, excuse me, all those transit trips are generated by the project, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, in the in the report that you included your trip generation, um, chart and also in the most recent report that you gave to us, you did a traffic volume comparison. And that traffic volume comparison looked at the three, um, the three key time periods and compared what would be the project-generated traffic to the hypothetical retail traffic volumes, correct?
That's correct.
And you came up with a a difference that that was, uh, showed that the project would in fact be would generate fewer trips via vehicle traffic than a retail, um, use at the project location, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, now you don't have such a comparison with respect to pedestrians slash bicycle and transit trips. Correct?
We did not produce a comparison of pedestrian and transit trips. That's correct.
Okay, and the reason for that would be that the transit trips are the transit trips and the pedestrian slash bicycle trips are unique to the project use going forward?
The the reason that we did not do the comparison is because we don't know how many transit and pedestrian users are, would be for a theoretical reoccupancy. That's why we do know for the residential piece, but for the retail piece, we do not have similar numbers.
Okay, so, so moving aside from a theoretical, when you say a theoretical reoccupancy, you mean if a retail use were to be reinstalled in the former Kmart, correct?
Correct. That's right.
Okay, so in that there is no hypothetical, uh, or or in that there is no retail use at the moment, the number of trips to and from the project relative to or generated because of, uh, generated by the project as it is, let me, let me start that again, sorry. The the number of trips, uh, transit trips and pedestrian slash bicycle trips generated by the project currently is zero, correct?
The in comparison to the re- the retail vacant retail building, the answer is yes, there's no, no trips generated by the vacant retail building.
Okay, okay, all right. So therefore, all those transit trips and pedestrian bicycle trips are going to be the result of the project, correct?
Correct.
So all those people that are crossing the street or using bicycles coming out of the project or the pedestrians coming out of the project who are residents in the project or visitors to the project are the result of the project?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Thanks. And thank you, Mr. Delisle. Further questions from the board?
Thank you, Mr. I. Well, I had some parking questions. I didn't know if you wanted, um, sure, to ask us to.
Absolutely. Yeah, we can, we can. Absolutely, yeah, we can, we can.
Okay, freely in the parking and come back to traffic, um, if there are further questions.
Yeah, no, I will, first, I I I comment, I I think, you know. All what Mr. Delisle pointed out is is where I'm focused is uh. Uh, I'm I'm familiar with these trip generation analysis. ITE, which is the standard, is really uh normally geared towards automobiles, and so. The five percent number that we've seen is just automobiles, so, so uh, I think what was just ferreted out was. Really where I wanted to end up is that uh in evaluating. The mitigation to cross Low Street. The contribution of the project is pedestrian traffic, so all of the transit trips. Uh, are from the project, more, it's unlikely that the mode split. For retailer would be very high for taking a bus to the Kmart. And um, you know, so I I think the the study. Or tells us there'll be about a hundred and, if you take eighty-three percent of the pedestrian and bike trips, eighty-three percent is what would be on Low Street. The seventeen percent going up north. And and maybe our consultant can help me make sure I do the math right. We use the, we use the same site distribution for the pedestrians that we would for the cars, right? Is that correct? Ask my consultant.
Questions, uh, with the percentages for the pedestrian and bicycle traffic represent the same vehicle trips?
No, 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 the direction, so trip dispersal, the trip dispersal, it's assumed in the study by VAI. Is eighty-three percent on Low Street.
Correct.
Okay, so if if according to their numbers, they're estimating an average weekday daily. Of uh pedestrian and bicycle trips of eighty-two. You take eighty-three percent of that, that's how many people we think are gonna be crossing Low Street, right?
Uh, not necessarily, they could be walking along Low Street on the same side and crossing, they could be. But even if you were destined for somewhere along High Street to the east. You might still choose to use Low Street, use one of the connecting streets like North Atkinson or one of the other dozen streets to try to connect up there. Um, I don't see it following a mirror image of that distribution pattern.
Got it, I got it, okay, okay, all right, and then, but as far as transit trips. Uh, we've been focusing on the Miva stops, the Miva stops around Low Street.
They're on both streets.
They're on both, so it's possible some of the tran- people will walk in a transit also, if you go north instead of south.
Correct.
Okay, I I, that's all I have for that. Um, all right, uh, now monitoring, I I'm sorry, uh, just stay up there.
Sure.
So. I'm, I'm really glad that um there was mitigation of possible conflicts by vehicles at the garage entrance by having one way in and. One way out, and then I I I totally understand what you're saying and also the other consultant. That uh now there'd be a right turn possible, right-hand turn possible, you talked about monitoring, and that's what I'm worried about. Is how do we craft a condition of approval so that we know it's properly monitored? And uh, you know, it it's not a public street, that's private property, so. Will there be a camera that we would require, I mean, really, because this is a practical matter. Then we'll get the complaints when people violate. What do we, first of all, how do we enforce it practically? How do we write that?
Um. I haven't given that full thought other than to know. I believe the city has full authority to monitor, independent of the applicant owner's own monitoring that they may do. As a condition of approval. Um, that could be independent monitoring over the course of the day. Uh, or the course of the week, whatever it might be, I I don't believe it has to be constant, but to understand. Uh, if and how many infractions there may be that would truly impact the operations at that node. Just up from Low Street. That, you probably saw my first letter, from a site layout perspective, it is something I zoned in on immediately. Uh, because the operational friction that it creates so close to the stop sign. Uh, at the end, the center driving in Low Street, so. Um, it is something that I believe has to be seriously contemplated, monitored, signed, signed, et cetera. But at the same time, I do believe there are benefits to having that right out to head up towards Story Ave within the site. Rather than either circulating back through the loading dock area or forbid you get out on the Low Street, only go around one. So, um, as far as the condition, I will think about that, I don't have an answer to you this evening, but. Um, I do believe it's possible and appropriate for the board to consider as an issue of approval.
Okay, next question, so uh in the last couple of days, uh, it's actually Bollers drawing on visitor parking. The the total parking count, you've already said that you're happy that the numbers are adequate. I think the grand total is something like two hundred and sixty odd spaces.
Oh, grand total.
So, but I'm just getting down to the practicalities of how the garage will work. Uh, that's probably, you know, visitors may or may not have access, there was uh, the AI had written in their response that. Uh, they, you know, maybe the residents would have a fob on their key. That would let them into the garage, but visitors may not have that fob.
Correct.
Okay, so that probably means they're gonna go to the visitor spaces that have been newly designed on the north. There are nine spaces, I'm just trying to be practical for two hundred and twelve households, in your opinion, is nine adequate? And and in many ways, the impact is gonna be on the shopping center, it's not actually gonna be on the city, you don't have any parking on Low Street. So I'm just trying to be practical for the shopping center too. Is nine gonna be enough, and also I noticed on the line, on the drawing, it said no overnight. What is your opinion?
Um, I just saw that note earlier today, just before the meeting, um. I am not concerned about the ultimate supply, as you noted, um, the nine visitor spaces I think is reasonable. I also believe that there is a wealth of other spaces that will act as visitor spaces should they be needed. Um, with them being responsive, trying to lay out. The parking in a different way with what's shown on the screen. Um, I think it provides a greater degree of flexibility for the applicant owner. To talk through what they described as the reciprocal ease of agreement.
Right.
Between the residential project owner and the balance of the plaza, should they be different at some point? That that flexibility in my mind still exists. So uh, uh, legal arrangement and uh, and zoning base discussion, but from a practical standpoint. There's so much parking available, that's why I have zero.
Okay, so just, just to make sure I I understand, so you're saying, so far as the city is concerned. The nine that they have, even as as a practical matter, people are staying overnight, is it visiting? Even if, let me finish, even if there's more than nine, the fact is, there is available parking and a practical matter. And so you don't think the city needs to do anything about demanding more spaces until it works itself out, basically, whatever.
I, from an overall number, yes, uh, but I, with the idea of the no overnight parking, I think that should be explored to a greater extent of the.
Okay, all right, um, all right, I'm almost done, um. The final question, and again, I I focused on the pedestrians and uh, you know, the relative, again, I mean, we we have a five percent. Number, which is the net contribution of trips from the project, these are the existing matters. And and expected future conditions would be with the one percent for every year, I got that. I mean, we don't, we don't have the number uh for what would be the percentage of pedestrian trips from this project. Can you give us a ballpark, I mean, uh, half the trips?
Just as far as the relationship to vehicle trips?
No, no, I I'm saying one percentage of the the pedestrians that are gonna be, if you didn't do any improvements on Low Street. For pedestrians, it would be an unsafe condition, the applicant also recognizes that.
Yes.
And then they propose mitigation, I'm just trying to understand on a spare share angle. What would be the fair share for that? Will be more than five percent, I assume, because the the share of pedestrians generated by the project. Means the existing conditions is higher than five percent.
Uh, within the sidewalk network right near there on Low Street set.
Yeah.
Um, yeah, I don't, I I don't believe there are hard pedestrian counts on Low Street.
Yes.
Um, it's very difficult to project how many would be directly related to the project, although what I can tell you. And somebody asked a question, it was a very good question about. The US Census data, and it's, it's the journey to work, so it's it's commuter-based trips. And or, you know, peak hour shopping tent trips, there will be more than that. More pedestrian trips, more bicycle trips than that. It's, it's gonna be a successful residential development, and it benefits by being within a shared. Trip environment within the plaza, but it also will generate those other off-site trips, and that's why it's not. Something that can be accurately estimated, but when I suggest the seventy-five thousand dollar contribution, it was towards. The understanding that there will be increased use between this new project, this new use in the site. And whether it's recreational walking trips along Low Street. Or school-based trips for kids and the parents walking to the resident, not the high school, whatever, wherever it may be. Um, there will be a big number of trips, it's just that it's very, very difficult for.
Fair enough, um, I just have two more questions, so um. It was typical, I mean, in the, at least in the last twenty-five years, almost every traffic of any size. That I've seen as kind of transportation abandoned management measures that are put in, and the the opponent. Uh, suggested this right out of the bat. I just want to clarify my understanding that that is actually to, an attempt to minimize. Vehicle trips and in favor of other modes like transit, walking and biking, is that correct?
That is correct, it's good practice.
All right, then the last question is, uh, while other colleagues are raising Mr. Swan. The difference between a HAWK signal, even a drawn, today's drawn, the latest upgrades, so they uh. Mr. Dirk said, uh, you know, they've offered either one, an RRFB or a HAWK. In your professional opinion, would a HAWK be safer for pedestrians than RFB or because of the island, is it all the same?
Um, a HAWK is a higher level of traffic control. The challenge with that is it's primarily meant for mid-block location. So if you were to consider a HAWK, it should really shift further east away from the influence of the center driveway.
Why, why is that, to give more braking time for the drivers or?
Um, really, so it's a distinct traffic control device that's focused on the crossing. That doesn't have the potential influence of, just say if it was in that spot that's shown on the screen. And it was a HAWK, it's, once it goes through its initial warning, it goes to yellow and it's solid red, which requires traffic to stop. If a motor is going eastbound on Low Street. You know, stops fifty feet back. Somebody on the driveway approach, either Hodges or the center driver would say, oh, they're giving me a courtesy gap. Meanwhile, they take out, out of the driveway and immediately cross the crosswalk, so. Um, there are considerations where it does make sense with low volume, but that's such a driveway is not a low volume, correct? So.
Well, isn't, but doesn't that suggest any, you have two HAWKs, you have one to stop the traffic coming south out of the driveway? And then one for Low Street?
No, and I think uh, a week ago I said, if it stays there and you were gonna do a HAWK, I would just recommend putting a full city. Not a HAWK sitting.
Okay, so ba- basically, it's, it's just not done in in the profession, they have two HAWKs that are right angles to each other, it's not.
Correct.
All right, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. I.
I just, I'm just a question for you, and I'm sorry, I have a few questions, I'll direct to maybe because you're here and then you have Mr. Dirk wants to chime in also. But Mr. Dirk had mentioned that he had intinuated that you agreed with him on the, on the traffic. And I I feel like listening to some of the comments here, I don't know that you necessarily need to agree.
Um, thank you for asking, so I, I think it's. Challenging, and I think I I will say that it's it's rare that you find a developer that does not wanna put a signal in to their problem. Um. But also, when I look at the characteristics of this specific forty-B project. This forty-B comprehensive current application, in my experience on those that. Uh, the capacity-related considerations are not necessarily in the front view. It's more about satisfying safety requirements for projects. Now with the, the comments that I've suggested, because of the layout of the site. And not having people take a left out of the garage to go into the center driveway. It does not noticeably exacerbate the side street level of traffic at the central driveway. But that's not so much because of, i- it's primarily related to the fact that you really need that. And push most of those trips up to the eastern driveway. If that was contributing more trips, like if it was gonna make sense not cause a whole lot of internal site friction to have left out of the garage and go to the center driveway. That would increase that level of side street demand. We know it meets warrants today, Mr. Dark, and I hundred percent agree on that. My, my suggestion, as I posed it to the board, is that by trying to address the critical safety of the pedestrian crossing there. Adding a left turn lane, which is warranted today and is exacerbated by the project. Those things make absolute sense as the a minimum threshold for the off-site improvements that I believe would be appropriate. But the other comments I made earlier tonight is that in the event that someday the developer. Wants to signalize the entire driveway, a full traffic zone, green, yellow, red, all the way around. It would make sense to do a little bit of prep work now, since you're gonna do the work in the street, to get ready for something like that so that. It's a proactive measure to make it easier to leave. By introducing a traffic signal, again, it's not the panacea because. Once you have that go red on Low Street, that's a new delay for Low Street that is not there today. So from a mobility standpoint for the existing users on Low Street that have nothing to do with the plaza, a signal doesn't make any sense. If you're looking for managing the existing flows coming out of the retail plaza. With a little bit of influence from the residential projects, say those visitor spaces and the like. That is a minor addition to the side street level of traffic. And yes, you could mandate a traffic signal go in, and it would be a superior safety-related improvement for the driveway-related traffic. But I do not believe it would be a mobility benefit positive.
All right, so let me continue on this a little bit with that. It isn't the benefit of building this affordable housing in a shopping plaza. That all the things of your daily needs would be a walkable. Your CVS happens to be across the street and up, and that's where your drugstore is, right? And then you've got a grocery store, and you you see where I'm going with this. Wouldn't it be the responsibility of the person that is bringing these new residents into this environment? To provide what's safe, to make sure that the people that are living in this walkable environment. That we're trying to create and get safely to the places. Why would you move to a walkable apartment building if it wasn't safe to walk to the places that you needed to get to?
And that's why I fashions the comments that I have today, and and they've been mostly responsive to those. For an example, um, just before the meeting, we're talking about the thing that's not shown on the site plan now, but is trying to connect. The, the proposed residential building to something like the bagel shop up near the Story Ave entrance.
Yeah.
Makes all the sense of the world, someone's gonna wanna wake up and say, I'm not gonna use my own dose, I'm gonna go get a bagel. I'm gonna walk, I want to be a safe uh way to get from A to B.
Absolutely.
In relation to CVS, they could choose to cross at whatever that device is in the enhanced crosswalk right out their door on Low Street. Or they can walk up Low Street and use the signal at Story Ave. There are different options where people have the ability to go different directions, but I fashion my comments because from a practical standpoint. With our review capacity, we wanna make sure that we can look at those things and offer suggestions that try to make a better project by connecting. The people and places either within the site or off the site.
I just have a few more. I just have a few more scattered questions listening to the whole board and, um. When when we as residents and I'm a board member, but I I I live in this neighborhood, if you will, right, so. Um, we see significant traffic in this area, we see up by C V S. The stacking of traffic, but then we hear from the consultants to say, well, it's insignificant, it's only five percent, but. It's where it is. If it was five percent someplace else in the city, who cares? But five percent where it is is significant, I just don't know why I'm not hearing that. From the traffic folks because it's about where it is, not. You with me?
Yes, something I I understand a concern, this is a gateway intersection in the new report.
Yes.
Um, when we.
Having on an internet interstate highway, right?
Understood. Um, when we look at the metrics and. The existing conditions, we look at the existing conditions, we make sure it's right. They've been responsive to say, when I had the comments, doesn't look quite right, up suggested updated counts. Suggested factors to adjust it to what I felt was gonna be more accurate for like the school year related condition. Based on what I saw down the street at Low in North Athens. Uh, just less than a year ago. They've made those adjustments, they've looked at that seventy year horizon, they've added and overlaid the site generated traffic, the seventy three trips of the peak hour. And just to repeat again, the relationship of those seventy three trips. Whether it's the AM, the PM or the Saturday midday is the total of all trips in all directions in and out. So not all seventy three are coming on any particular lane all at the same time. But they're distributed ins and outs to story out to Low Street in both directions. That's important to understand because when we look at what the AI has done in a very professional manner, very detailed manner. An additional piece of trips, say at Story Ave, Women Way and Low Street. The different movements that the traffic gets added to. On average per vehicle, it's a difference of about one second per vehicle and about one extra car in a queue. To me, that is not something that rises to the level of being an acute capacity impact. That would warrant physical mitigation at that intersection.
Okay. Um, the one point five million, where's that, what mirrors that number generated?
Um, I did not generate the one and a half, we talked about, and I said it a week ago, that. If a left turn lane with all pressure improvements and a full signal was to go in at the center driveway. My estimate was probably around one point two all in.
Wait, 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 is it, are we talking private money or government money? Because those are two completely different facts.
My. It was just about dollars, if if the board and the city wanted to impose that on developer. That's about the price tag of what that offsite improvement would be. The five percent, the one point five million is something that Mr. Dirk had generated. It has nothing to do with the seventy five thousand.
Is that number negotiable? Should we be talking more about that number? Is that a bad number?
Um. The seventy five thousand that I recommended in a in the first letter was. Not anything related to the traffic signal or the improvements at the center.
Well, now that you know what you know.
If if any signal is required in the future, I wouldn't recommend the city spend a dime.
Thank you. Um, all right, let's let's talk a couple, sorry, Mr. Chair, just a few more things here, um. This, the state determines the 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 speed limits, so they do studies, I know they've studied Low Street. Has any of their studies been pulled into this? I imagine they're public information.
I've done my own studies on behalf of the city on Low Street, yeah, in that case.
So it's a, it's a raceway.
It is a raceway, um, uh, that is an existing condition. Um, I don't see that measurably changing with the introduction of this forty B project, um, but.
Do you think if four hundred people tried to cross the street, it might be an issue?
That that is an issue today. Oh, and I've witnessed people that have worked in the plaza crossing the street to get to the vehicle.
You don't think it's safe?
It is not safe. But there is an existing condition out there, whether it's speed and or volume. That is not related to the applicant. The applicants additional trips that they may generate, whether it's vehicular, bicycle, pedestrian, once all the label that. Require the conversation of responsible mitigation.
And they're responsible to help us, that says.
And that's what they're in the process of doing with the updated drawings in the last week.
Is that enough?
I'm satisfied that they're on their way, I raised the same question about the shoulder width that somebody else had raised, um. Because that would be the change from existing to propose. If the road is not widened slightly, that would. Uh, eliminate some of that shoulder width that's used for bikes today. That's really the one variable, the other stuff is is relatively easy to address, signs, strength in conduit, an extra flasher in the median. Um. If it was to be unsignalized but have higher pressure controls. Um, my suggestion for the extra seventy five thousand was a suggested contribution of the applicant. To give more or less the seed money to the city with other seed funds to look at the longer term fixes further east on Low Street, not. Anything related to a traffic signal or some fair share of that. Future traffic control device for the center driveway.
Generally, is unfair share something that's negotiated or one side just determines what will be?
Um. I believe Mr. Dirk said it correctly and accurately that. If there was a specific type of infrastructure improvement that say the city already had planned. Um, and there was a proportional volume of traffic. That was gonna be added to that four thousand change that's there today. That would be a good metric for trying to apply fair share to a specific project with a specific budget and seek a fair share. But one that I'm suggesting is more nebulous because there's not even a proposal for doing the Low Street study. But something that I believe would be reasonable to request in lieu of them saying. Physically reconstructing sidewalks or bikeways for a block or two to the east, to me, that doesn't make sense because it's. Better to use the money to try to advance something that is corridor based rather than something that. I think somebody said it might be done and then redone again, that wouldn't be in my mind. Uh, wise use of that serum of volume.
Sounds like where we're headed.
Yeah, and I believe the framework is there based on what I've guided within my letters and I think they're well on their way to. Um, address some my technical comments about access and C P.
Okay, um, I have one more thing and. Oh, important, so as we're looking at like, you know, you take a left in and da 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 da. The one thing that isn't being mentioned all this is what I I think is really the problem, but everybody's more. More worried about what's not in my eyes the problem. The problem right now is if you're in Fort Plaza and you're trying to get out, then car staff. Trying to get out because nobody will stop to let them get out. Cause they're cruising up to the light, they know they're gonna get stuck in traffic at the light, so. You have to be kind of kind to let people out there because nobody lets them out there. So all of a sudden now you're at, you're introducing two hundred more cars into an area that is very difficult to get out. And I know we've talked about all this, but the reality is is that that's where the car staff is, no one, no one wants to be helpful there. I know I try to stop and let those people out, especially if they're trying to, you know, they're trying to go down Low Street to head downtown, but. I is. All of what we're talking, you were talking about one way in, one way out, now we're we're going both ways, but I still don't hear anybody addressing the fact that. Fort Plaza is gonna get scotch up with traffic. Um, cause they're 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 going, they're just going into it and you're. Two hundred and sixty cars or whatever it is right there, is this, is this in the equation? I I just don't understand how we're not gonna get a traffic jam around this building.
Um, they've been responsive to eliminate that first aisle into the plaza on the left. To try to reduce some of that friction close to Low Street. That will allow the people that are entering to go farther into the plaza between, before trying to take that left. Other than the garage entrance and the right out that's being proposed now, there are no other. Openings to aisles until you get up to that northwest corner of the building. So that also is gonna have limited friction along that right side when you go into the center driveway compared to today. When you have to look all over the place because the aisles are coming in both from the left and right. I, there will still be backups trying to get out of that driveway.
Now, here's the unintended consequences, you come out of that building, you you know, if you're gonna head to Low Street, you're. So you're gonna probably head to Market Basket Plaza, you try to get out of there one, especially if they're heading downtown. You're gonna create all this internal traffic where you have four hundred pedestrians trying to walk through to do their shop, like. There's a lot going on here and I know you guys are like looking at the roads and and you're looking interior, but you're mixing bikes, people and cars. You're sending the majority, I think it was eighty three percent into the traffic and I know that's not gonna happen, I know they're gonna try to get out the other side. And because Market Basket, and I know we're not supposed to look at the reality of around us apparently. But Market Basket is connected to Shaws, the road goes through. So all, so you've got all of this going on and I can't look at it like this.
Yeah, no, I think it's a good thing, um, there will be trips that go up towards Story Ave. Um, but that was estimated to be roughly seventeen percent for those that wanna go up to High Street and downtown that way, um.
But I don't think you guys realize the existing problem that's there now without an apartment though then. How many of those trips are really that eighty three percent is gonna divert themselves as people take the path of least resistance?
I. I disagree. Um, I believe that the trends. Based on where traffic's going, I believe they're reasonably accurate and I've spent a lot of time in that plaza since this assignment has begun to observe those trends, so. Um, I believe they're accurate enough to make decisions on, um, and I don't believe that this could be noticeable impact up towards Story Ave, those couple stickers.
I appreciate your your standing, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, um, further questions? No? Any parting thoughts, um, was. On, uh, anything that would be heard this evening? What's that? Um, here's a procedural question. We are, seems like you've reached. At least the interim terminus on questions with respect to traffic and parking and that analysis. I know that we planned, it's it's rounding nine thirty, uh, we plan to at least attempt to open up. Uh, our second subject matter vertical, which is Stormwater. We have experts here and that will, folks presumably prepared to, um, speak and ask. And those about to comment, should we, can we suspend? Traffic and continue to continue it while we open up the new vertical and may we circle back if something should arise in this area?
Absolutely, I mean, there is no, there is no regulation telling me that I have to do this subject by subject to deliberate on a subject. Choose a condition on a subject, the next subject.
I think it's way premature.
Yes, thank you, and and I think overall board needs to look at everything together.
Okay, that that's what I thought, I appreciate your, you know, just to. Your reaffirmation and guidance so that we can, I I think that and members of the Z B A, what I'm inclined to do is, obviously, this is an evolving. Subject matter, uh, and it's an evolving body of material. May be impacted and may raise and give rise to good questions as we hear from other areas, so I'm going to keep this. Uh, essentially paused but open as we continue into opening a new subject matter area. We can at any time circle back, uh, with new questions, uh, during questions to the board. And so as we, what I contemplate is as we aggregate through these subject matter verticals, this is nearly our first, so it's probably, you know, appropriate to talk about it now. As we aggregate new subject matter verticals, we may find ourselves spinning back to questions from the board. With respect to those newly opened subject matter areas as well as past subject matter areas that are perhaps impacted by information we've heard. Um, is everyone, is anyone not in agreement that that is a sort of a general plan to follow? Any any thoughts or comments before we kind of?
Well, I I agree, I think we've exhausted transportation from home, yeah, from home, we've got all the information from their consultants, from their team about what they propose. They've explained why they proposed it, and then we asked questions of our expert, what do you think of their proposal? I think we're exhausted for now, I'm ready to go on the storm line.
Okay, um, with that, I'm going to, uh, it's nine thirty, we, uh, we're gonna, we're planning to go as a hard stop till about ten P M. Uh, just keep everyone sanity, um. Anyone have an appetite for a few moment break, restroom, what have you, and then come back in three to five minutes, we'll call, and then what we're, what I'm, what I'm planning to do. Is we're gonna open Stormwater, we're going to hear from the applicant, the applicant's, um, professionals. Uh, and our peer review expert and we will then take, uh, public comment with respect to Stormwater, so anyone that's here this evening. That's been patient to stay here this evening, we're gonna be hearing from you shortly, um, I'm gonna take five minutes as a quick recess, anyone who wishes to just. Get a drink of water, use the restroom, what have you, and shortly at, um, nine thirty five or nine thirty six, we'll, uh, we'll jump right into our next area. So with that, we'll let go off the record for five minutes. Do you think you can comment on everything I just spoke about or explain it? Well, to be clear, what we said at the outset is we try, we wanna try to focus public comment on the areas that are before us. Uh, but if you have a comment and it refers to something that you've heard, we're gonna hear both, I both topics this year, but but not future topics we haven't opened up yet. Because we would have a context for that, uh, so the last, we just, the last members in the public can just wait till we hear that material so that we have a context for.
Yeah.
Can you get back, be back on the record?
Awesome.
Well, we have ideas of civil.
And uh, we're uh reconvening the continuation of the uh C B A hearing for September thirtieth. And uh, with that, we're gonna open up both, and I missed quote, but I said Stormwater. It's actually civil engineering and uh Stormwater. And with that, attorney me. Or whoever is on, we'll hear him first upon that.
Randy Meyer from Baller's, can we do our presentation?
Of course, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Uh, Randy Meyer and Baller, uh, and I will be going over the uh. I guess I call it the civil engineering aspects of the project as well as the Stormwater. And what we've done is I've kind of broken up the uh, the slides into two different parts. First part is. Uh, the civil aspects of the project, you know, the site features, lighting, landscaping, stuff like that. And then there's the second part of it is Stormwater, which we can get into in a little bit, but uh. Uh, this is the site. I think I don't think we need to go over it anymore. It's the Four Plaza Property. It's the K Mart. Uh, it's the former abandoned K Mart building on the bottom page. Uh, the Four Plaza Property is roughly fourteen and a half acres. And if you can flip to the next slide. And as part of the project, we are proposing to um. Uh, to subdivide uh the project from the Four Plaza Property. Uh, the parcel that's being subdivided is uh about two point six acres. So that would mean the remaining Four Plaza Property would be about twelve acres. Uh, next slide please. And this is the site plan. Uh, I know this was shown in the previous presentation. I've attempted to kind of highlight just some of the key items around the uh, around the property.
If I wanna go and I can put a hand or so.
Perfect. That's good. Yeah, but yeah, I mean, it continues to be, it's a two hundred and twelve uh unit residential building. Uh, we've talked about the access driveways, the Vanport Plaza access driveway to the west, and then on the east, you know, the other driveway. Um, the uh, you know, we're showing essentially there's a new perimeter sidewalk around the entire building. Uh, there's various sidewalk connections from the new building out into the Low Street sidewalk. Um, and then there's also uh, there's this, you know, there's, there's several exterior bike racks that are being proposed. We talked about the visitor parking spaces, the ADA parking spaces, having that new area. Uh, that was modified to address some of uh T E C's comments right in there. Um, and then there's a also a a drop up area, uh, kind of that U-shaped uh portion right in that area. That's intended really just for um, uh, Uber drivers, uh, Amazon deliveries, things of that nature. Um, and then there's also a, uh, there's an interior bike rack within the building. And I think we'll probably talk about this when we talk about architecture of the building a little bit more. I know the architects are here, but there is an interior bike rack. Uh, interior bike room that's being proposed. And then in terms of trash and deliveries, there's a trash room. Uh, if you can zoom into that back of the house area. One that's possible, just trash room. There we go. Yeah, right, pointing to that area with an overhead door and really trash operations. Uh, it it the trash uh receptacle will be on wheels. It'll be carted out and then a trash truck with um come in that area and pick it up. And we did provide a, I know it's one of T E C's comments, we did provide a uh, a trash truck parking exhibit. Um, and then in terms of uh, uh, loading, there is one loading space uh in that area there. And again, loading is intended for just for smaller pub truck type vehicles, uh, and no, no large vehicles. Um, and. And really, that's kind of just an overview of the uh, of the site plan itself. Um, there, I know it was previously discussed, there's two hundred and sixty-one parking spaces. Uh, two hundred and thirty-eight of those are within the uh, within the garage. And then there's twenty-three exterior spaces, uh, or surface parking spaces, kind of in the back of house area that we just looked at. Um, so that brings us all to twenty-sixty-one. Um, and and if we can go to the next slide. Yeah, and again, this is just, I know this was also talked about, but just, just a slide that shows on the additional pedestrian connectivity that are being provided as part of the project. Uh, connecting Shaw's to the West shops, uh, connecting Shaw's to uh towards the uh McDonald's property. As well as up towards the uh, the vacant shop in that area. Um. And if we go to the next slide. Yep, and this is just a uh. Just a slide of the garage, again, two hundred and thirty-eight parking spaces within the garage. The um, the one item that's not reflected on this garage plan, which will be updated, is that we are going to be providing some either E V parking spaces within the garage or E V ready parking spaces within the garage. So that will be provided as part of the project. Um. Let me go to the next slide. Great. Uh, and in terms of landscaping. Uh, obviously, fresh new landscaping is gonna be proposed as part of the project. It should be a a a significant improvement over uh, from an aesthetic standpoint over what's out there today. Uh, we are maintaining those street trees along Low Street. Um, and then we're supplementing. Total, there's uh forty-three additional trees being composed in addition to the street trees on Low Street. And then there's several hundred uh, uh, new shrubs and plantings uh throughout areas of the project, new perennial grasses, uh, cats, some animals there also being proposed. Um. Go to the next slide. Great. And then this is just a photometric plan that was provided just to demonstrate that light levels will be um, are being provided for stability and security purposes. Um, all the lights are downward facing. They're dark sky compliant, designed to minimize spillover over the uh, over the property lines around to the adjacent properties. Um, there's, yeah, we did provide some cut sheets to those lights. Uh, really, there's just a couple new parking lot lights that are being added. And then the rest of the lighting for the property or for the project is being done through simple, just simply building mounted lights. Um, and again, cut sheets are provided of those uh on the uh, on the plan. Um. And that, I mean, that's kind of the first part of my overview of the civil aspects of the project. I don't know, before we get into Stormwater, if there's questions or do you want me to just keep plowing through?
Um, while we go through, I mean, while we go through everything, I think we'll be able to address everything, then be able to have a comment, and then questions. As much as that, I'll give your, certainly at least close to there.
Excellent. Uh, so as part of our um, our Stormwater design, our Stormwater analysis. We looked at really the existing and proposed um Stormwater route conditions. Um, and as as part of that, we create, you know, you you create different design points, trying to analyze where a Stormwater goes to in the existing condition. So the plan up uh that you're looking at on the screen is just the existing condition, what is in that? For this particular project, there was three design points. Uh, there was the design point on kind of in the upper right-hand corner of the sheet, which is uh, uh. That was design point number two. And then there's a design point kind of both in the lower right-hand corner near the Low Street. Yep, right there. The Low Street driveway. And then there's that other design point, it's actually design point number one. And that was really the, that's the focus of this discussion. It's really that design point, which is essentially the connection to the city's Stormwater system within, within Low Street. Um, from that, this, you know, essentially. A large majority of the Four Plaza, as well as virtually almost all the entire project drains to that design point. And that's where it ties into the Low Street drainage system. Um, from that design point. Stormwater is then routed through a uh, an eighteen-inch uh underground pipe that goes beneath Low Street. And it outfalls into the, to the wetlands on the opposite side of the street. Um, and as part of that outfall, there is a, the city actually has an easement for the maintenance of that uh, of that area. Um. And not only does that eighteen-inch pipe that goes beneath Low Street, not only does it collect. Uh, you know, portions of of the storm of the uh, the Four Plaza uh Stormwater runoff, but it also collects a large portion of the surrounding area, uh, Stormwater from the surrounding area. It actually goes, I think it almost reaches up to Story Ave, it goes in the, towards the west. So that the eighteen-inch pipe, um, uh, again, it collects a large portion of Stormwater runoff from the area. And that was one of the design points that we had analyzed uh as part of our Stormwater design. Um, and essentially what we're looking to do is to really not make the condition or make Stormwater runoff rates any worse than they are today. Um, so that was really the big, uh, the big focus for us to try to do, like to try to um, uh. To try to, you know, make sure that we're meeting the standards, uh, the mass D E P redevelopment standards as part of our Stormwater design. And if we look to the next slide. And again, this is just the, this is our proposed conditions watershed map. Again, it shows, if you zoom in, that's American, thanks. It essentially shows the proposed project. Uh, you know, again, we look, we're analyzing all the same design points, making sure we're not increasing runoff. Uh, or making the conditions any worse than they are today. And what we did was we uh, we essentially, we are reducing the Stormwater runoff rates, getting to that design point, which is the Low Street drainage system. We're also reducing the volumes and we're also uh reducing the velocities. Um, and. If we go to the next slide. In addition to that, uh, uh, so this plan here is our drainage and utility plan. Um, we are also providing, you know, there's a series of catch basins drain manholes around the perimeter of the project. That eventually tie into that, at that design point or into the Low Street drainage system. And in addition to uh. Now, in addition to that, we're also providing some new, there's some new water quality units uh as part of the project. There's three new water quality units, you know, to help. Help treat the Stormwater, improve T S S prior to discharging to, to the Low Street uh drainage system. So to kind of just summarize our Stormwater management system, you know, we're reducing, the project is reducing impervious surfaces by around nine thousand square feet. Once compared to the existing vision. We're also reducing uh the Stormwater runoff rates, volumes and velocities for all storm events entering the Low Street drainage system. Um, also improving the water quality through those three new water quality units as part of the project. We're also meeting the mass D E P uh redevelopment standards. Uh, and if we look to the last slide, then this is just a uh. I I we included this, this is just a velocity exhibit that we included as part of our Stormwater design, uh, that I haven't printed up more, just to begin to prove that uh. Or demonstrate that the velocities to the design point are being uh increased versus what they are today. Um, and I know that um, I spoke into Phil a couple times. I know he has, there's still some outstanding comments and some calculations that we need to do based on his most recent letter that we got. We received, um, it was last week, middle of last week. So there's still some calculations that we need to do, but we're confident that we can address his concerns. Uh, I know I spoke with Bill, I don't want to speak for him, but um, there's some additional stuff that we need to do by to him. Um, just to make sure that he's okay with everything. But really, that's kind of a summary of the um, of the Stormwater management system and its, its analysis for.
Thank you, Mr. Merritt. Um, I think at this point, we'd like to hear from uh, uh, our professional engineer for the city of here in New York, Phil Christensen of B E G. Mr. Christensen, thank you for waiting this evening. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. There's been a lot of changes or some changes in the plans after this first submitted. We got a second submitted, there are a lot of improvements. This third submitted, I only saw this afternoon, uh, just sent, so I haven't had time to review it. With regard to Stormwater, there's two issues. One is flow and one is quality. And on the Stormwater flow, you look at volume of flow, but also the velocity of the flow. And. The project, as stated, has less impervious area, and therefore it's gonna have less volume and flow. So even without calculation or anything, you know, there's gonna be less volume of water flowing down and going across Low Street. The rate at which it gets there, even though it's less water, could be increased depending upon the design of the system. So I have to wait for the analysis that they're gonna provide from the hydro cap uh program. That show me that the velocities are actually less under existing, under proposed conditions than existed. The reason it. It could change is under existing conditions is the pipes are relatively small. They're increasing some pipe sizes. So it's quite possible, even though you have less water, it might get there more quickly and increase velocity. Increased velocity and causes increased erosion at the discharge point. So I have to wait and see what that's like. The in regard to water quality, as was mentioned, there's uh three water quality units being added to the site, which are good. Uh. But I also think they should uh look back at the catch basins and see if there's hoods in those basins. You know, you put a hood in the basin, uh, instead of the water just flowing out of the basin, it's gotta blow up and out. And what that does, it enables the. Settable solids to settle down in the basin. And I don't know if they're gonna do that, but I've asked them to take a look to see if there are hoods there. I don't know if there are. And also, we should have a report from them. I assume that there's routine cleaning of those basins. Uh, and if they've got a report on when it was cleaned last or the frequency of cleaning, that's important to know. Uh. And if there isn't a rate, a routine cleaning, then maybe. Part of your approval should require that uh, there be some type of routine cleaning now there. The the bigger issue here is, and one we've discussed quite a bit, is the discharge south of Low Street. What I've heard back from the applicant is, look, they're feeding into a city storm sewer system. And any problem with the discharge is the city's problem, not the applicant's problem. I look at it in terms of the Stormwater Management Regulations and. Number one and number two, and policy in the past. Ordinarily, if there's a uh. Increased discharge to a, a, a system, whether it's a sewer system or a drainage system like this. And the pipes don't have the capacity, ordinarily, an applicant will make some improvements to allow the order to fall. In this case, I don't know if you've ever seen it down there, but this discharge pipe was about four feet above the ground. And then water just flows out of it, down into a fairly eroded channel. And that's just gonna get worse. It's gotta be corrected. Uh, I think it's between the city and the applicant to decide who's gonna pay for it, but it needs to be corrected. It's causing a lot of erosion. And that's problems to people that own the property downstream. So uh, that's an issue that should be resolved in some way before uh these hearings will open. And with regard to the rest of the Stormwater, I can't. Can't give you much on it until I see the new calculations there, but because there were a lot of uh inconsistencies and errors in the first set of calculations. Because there were a lot of, uh, inconsistencies and errors in the first set of calculations.
Any questions? We, uh, we surely may, Mr. Christensen. Thank you very much for your, uh, your comments. We'll just ask you to. You want to sit around for just a little bit while we, uh, while we think around. With that, uh, what I'd like to do is open up public comment. And again, during public comment, we ask anyone in the room who wishes to be heard, just kindly raise your hand. I'll recognize you. We do ask that you kindly take the podium and give us your name and address so that this stretch of joy can accord that for the minutes. We'll do in the room and then any hands online. Uh, if you do rise and wish to be heard, please, um. Feel free to, if you need and say you are pro or con, for or against, uh, simply feel free to offer your comments. And, uh, we are opening up public comment for what we've heard this evening with respect to traffic and parking as well as now the newest. Uh, subject matter area, which is, uh, civil engineering and stormwater thus far. So with that, anyone in the room wish to be heard? Yes, please. Evening.
Uh, Lisa Medina Smith, one seventy five Story Avenue. Um, so my question is around, um, whether or not there could be a comparison between the three options that have been discussed. Leading to some of the traffic mitigations. We've discussed the R F B, the Hawk, the traffic signal, uh, but it hasn't really been compared side by side regards to. Are they satisfied the safety requirements for pedestrians or how they satisfy, um. Um, kind of addressing some of the traffic flow concerns on low street. Um, I think looking, we keep swapping them in and out in these conversations, and I think a comparison of the three would be helpful. Um, as you make the decision, especially given, um. The discretion at least between the R F B, R R F B and the Hawk are at the discretion of the city. I think we need to also take the traffic signal in the mix. Um, given some of the comments from today. Um, other than that, I did have one big comment on the civil, on the U shape, um, design. Um, I wanted to understand kind of like what the limitation was or assumptions were for the length of vehicles that can go in. There was a mention around, um. Amazon delivery vans, those can be up to seven feet, and I'm not sure that they can handle the turning radius. Um, so would like to kind of understand the assumptions around that so that we can refine the design.
Very good. Thank you. And I should note, in case anyone's new in the room, uh, with respect to public comment, if you wish to frame. Public comment in the form of a question, we certainly encourage you and welcome you to do so. Uh, please know that we won't be able to respond directly to a question, a public comment framed as a question. Though rest assured, it's no intent to be discourteous. You will shortly hear drawing questions from the board. That comment slash question reframed in some manner. We're listening very attent, we're, we're listening very attentively. At taking notes, so please feel free to frame it as a question, uh, if you wish and know that it will be built into the mix by us. Uh, even if it isn't directly responded to at home. Any further comments? Yes, sir.
Hello. Thank you for your time tonight. Uh, my name is Eric Tracy, I live at two Chapman vein. I like to Port Plaza often. I use my bike for grocery shop and even visit various businesses there. Uh, I don't appreciate a statement earlier that they too. Pedestrian fatalities that have happened recently are, are just unlucky, what have you. Um, and I do appreciate the board's concern. Those of you who've asked many questions about how to make it more safe. For walking and also for biking. Uh, while, while as a driver, I appreciate that there's a left lane option, squeezing a bike lane into two feet is. Not acceptable or safe. Um, number two, I'd, I'd like to mention the story avenue entrance. To Port Plaza is currently inaccessible via sidewalk. And I have a picture I would like to show you. Um, I emailed it to Mr. Port, I'm afraid we'll pop it up real quick. Yes, just during this meeting.
Okay, yes. We don't, normally we don't pull things up from the fly box. Is, do you?
All right.
Do you have a copy of, a hard copy of the photo, perhaps?
Uh, no, just on my phone. I can show each of you after the meeting as well. It's of a, uh. It, it's of an elderly couple attempting to access Port Plaza, presumably to do their shopping. In the snow in January with an eighteen wheeler trying to come into that land as well. And I, I think. Uh, even if it's not part of this project, having a connected sidewalk all the way up. To the story adventure, uh, the story avenue entrance. Is a must have. Um, and I was originally a very big, uh. Fan of the idea of, of having units right here where people could make most of their daily errands. Right inside of Port Plaza. So, uh, I'm not sure why it appears that this is. A, a more car dependent solution. I don't see the benefit in having a U shape drop off and Amazon trucking drop off. Uh, I mean, they can park anywhere and make deliveries. Um, I feel like if you want people to feel like they can walk around, they shouldn't just come out the door and see parked cars. Right? There could be a cafe on the ground floor and all that space that's the U shape could actually just be. Outdoor seating for that cafe, you know, have some kind of other destination in mind. But thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Um, any further comments in the room? Yes.
Mayor July thirty three Almira Ave. Um, a couple of things, uh, similarly, there's a lot of real estate in the parking lot, which I appreciate. And it's all owned by this one owner. And so I think that, and a lot of the parking is presently vacant. So I think for the future, it would be helpful. I appreciate the attempts that are made so far to make. Crossing through that area a, a little bit easier. But I think a lot more could be done to allow for safer routes by pedestrians and cyclists. Um, throughout that whole area. There's a lot of real estate to be able to improve that. I would say look at someplace like a Winfield Market Place and see. How much, um, easier the access is to get in between different roads and parking and such. Um, the transit issue, I think, um, I would love to see a, uh, a permit condition where perhaps they look at actually doing. A Viva, uh, plus pull off. Um, transit hopefully will just increase in the future. So potentially being able to actually have that bus pull off in front of the building. What is the rear building, but the front of the low side, uh, low street side, so that we can safely exit and not have to tangle them up. With cyclists and pedestrians at the crosswalk. Um, and then my third comment is more about stormwater, uh, and I haven't. Uh, gone so deep into the stormwater report as traffic and parking. I know the argument here is about impermeable surface and reducing the amount of impermeable surface. But we're replacing pavement with a building, and the building is equally impermeable. I'm sure there's going to be, uh, the roof and the roof drains. And I guess I just have lots of questions about with roof drains, you're still going to get runoff. It's going to direct down something, down sponges. How is that water going to get collected? Is the velocity of the water coming through those roof drains going to be much higher than water sheeting across the parking lot? Presumably, it'll be at least cleaner. Um, but I wonder how that water's going to be, uh, collected. And if there isn't an opportunity to use some rain infrastructure, uh, incorporated into this, like rain roof or blue roof. To be able to address some of, um, that, uh, that issue, that collection issue. Thanks.
Thank you. Uh, further comments in the room? Any further hands in the room on either topic, traffic? Parking, stormwater, engineering, uh, going to hands online. And we have, uh. Only. Four individuals online as attendees. Um. If you are listening online and wish to be heard, just feel free to virtually raise your hand and we'll unmute your mic, ask you to do the same and we'll hear you. Going once, going twice, seeing no hands and, uh, one last call in the room before. We close at least for the moment, public comment. And again, uh, with each subsequent meeting, we'll be in different subject matter area. We will be aggregating. Public comment with that new area plus anything that we've dealt into prior is also fair game. It's certainly, we want, we want to hear it. Um, I'll close public comment. We'll go to questions from the board. Jared.
I, I have questions about civil, um. Well, civil drawings first for the holder, if I can ask those. And then the questions about drainage are all for ourselves, so I'll hold those.
Okay. Um, okay, uh, so then it came up, you've probably heard before. Um, why no overnight parking for those nine visitors?
We can move back to you on that.
Okay, fair enough. Um, okay, uh, now I make sure I understand that the, uh. For the current building, which of course is vacant for about seven years, but the loading is in the same location, right?
You're correct, definitely.
And I saw on your, your truck movements to show that the, the right class of trucks can fit through and all that stuff.
Correct.
Uh, they're already using this exit from elsewhere in the shopping center, other trucks?
Other trucks, sorry, yeah, we, correct, shaws and stuff are using that, that same driveway.
Okay, and I, I think, uh, our consultant from tech had raised an issue about. The, uh, visitor parking around the service, it's for service people on either side, those outdoor parking spaces. Here that loading area, have you, you, you feel that's okay, that's gonna, there's going to be a, a conflict. Between trucks passing through.
That's correct. Yeah, that, those twenty-three service parking spaces are intended for employees, I'm sure, to short term, short term vendor.
Alright, so someone, uh, has to get the, the, uh, Comcast, or get their cable TV, that's what they park.
Right.
Alright, um. You mentioned E V ready, so that, that can be determined. It sounds like that we don't have a firm number in mind.
So, and I think that will be discussed when we talk about the building and we get in.
For the architect.
Yeah, yeah.
Open space calculations. We did have a comment, I took from the planning director. Uh, I saw in your latest drawings, it looks like you don't need a waiver for open space per unit. Or do you? I was just unclear because also the planning director. Have raised an issue about how you were defining open space, something about whether. The, uh, courtyard are on the ground level.
Sorry, I think you're referring to, there's a bullet in the planning board letter, right? That you're referring to a bullet or a comment in the planning board letter. Reference to the calculation may not be consistent with the way open space is defined in the zoning law. And so that whatever, I think what they were pointing out to the Z D A, the applicant to discuss was. If it isn't calculated in accordance with the ordinance, at least the board and the applicant are having a discussion with the actual areas or their.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So that's what I tried to add. It, the way you calculated it under our zoning code, the open space per unit. What, are you hitting the number or not?
For the open space per unit?
Yeah. Cause I think it has to be over thirty thousand per song.
We, I believe we, I believe we are hitting the, for, the space, yeah. When we have required it. Our zoning table includes the actual definition then from, from, from the bylaws. So that's how we calculated it based on how the bylaws. Tell us to calculate them.
Yeah, and I could just, uh, to the extent it may be helpful, it may be that the planning board's tone that came from, uh, was related to the earliest plans that they had submitted. So it may be that there was some subsequent, fabulous definition that they were responsible for, I guess.
I got it. Okay, I, I see it on the table. I just wanted to hear it from you. So. It looks like if you do the numbers, you need thirty-one thousand eight hundred square feet for open space. But you're going to hit thirty-seven thousand six thirteen, so you're, you're okay.
Correct.
Alright. Um, the street trees, I, I think one of the, uh. You know, obviously the streets gate's really important to us. Uh, it sounds like you, you designed this thing in a way that you can leave. And those are pretty mature trees for every port. We don't usually have trees that are that robust.
They're fairly big.
Uh, are, so really, you're going to be able to leave those? Cause there's a bit of a, a grade change there. Are you not concerned you're going to kill them?
They're, they tend to try to keep them as best we can. So yes, we're, we're intending on keeping them. I think they'll need to be protected certainly during construction.
Yeah, or wrapped up with something or.
Yes.
Okay, so, um, and then, uh, two more questions, the photometric. I, uh, is there a, you know, I'm used to seeing, you know, sort of a shorthand where they say, oh, we're meeting the dark skies. Standard, whatever, or it's a full cutoff wooden era. Are you doing that?
They are, they're, so they are fully cut off from the ninety degree angle, all downward facing.
I saw you got the, you got the lumens or whatever showing up and the noirs, uh. So you're not, you're not having any spill over to the, the buttery right to the east?
That's correct.
Cause that, that's going to be his number one, she, who to be tested by about that. Okay, and, um, I mean, just to know, we probably write a, a, we should work through a little bit, sure we can verify that, you know, make sure the order too. Um, tell us about the U shaped drop off. We, uh, it looks, it looks pretty wide, twenty-four feet. I'm not saying that's a bad thing.
Yeah, so it's, 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 it's just one way entered, uh, one way. So, and I think what we'll do, maybe the next way, we can provide an exhibition to show a vehicle. And I'm going to bring through that area.
Yeah, and maybe, uh, maybe with the, I mean, I'm sure, uh. The architect has done many other multifamily, the architect too, so he has other examples of things that are built. Just so you can visualize it.
True.
Um, I've got an almost, an elevation. Um, but, uh. The specific question we got from a member of the public just now. Uh, certainly wide enough for an Amazon, one of those Amazon vans, but you think it will be able to.
I do, I mean, it, it's, it's twenty-four feet wide.
No, but I mean the length, you know, so that you're not going to, you're not worried they're going to be sticking out into the. They're going to be able to fit it there.
Correct, okay. We, we will provide an exhibit to, that, that, that demonstrates that.
Okay, but thank you very much. That's how I have civil do that. Thank you, Jared. Yes, Mr. Swan.
I just have one question. It's on the parking page, I believe it's. Uh, sorry, I'll leave. If you could blow up that west entrance there. The, uh, holder tonight, we heard a change that if you exit this way, you only need to take, to take a right. Um. And then we heard some enforcement concerns. That, you know, how to stop people from taking a left. I guess my question is, is it possible to put a little piece of curb here to kind of. Kind of point people up that way, so they have to take, have to take a right? I'm like, I mean, they can still, I suppose, block when they walk around it, but it certainly would shoot you out that way. Is that ever done in this situation where you want to have people only take a right? That's my question.
So I think in, uh, in Jeff, I don't know if you're still listening, Jeff Dirk, uh, but I think we can, you know, we can certainly provide some pavement striping, some signage. But you're looking for an actual, like a physical barrier.
I've, I've seen some places where, where they actually have like a. Curves, like there's curves that can follow you to the right. So you kind of have to, you're, it's not just a stripe.
Like a rated curve or a rumble strip.
That's something you might consider.
We can get to that.
Look at that, that would help people only go right. Yep, thank you. Further, um, thank you, further questions? Yes, I better give. Uh, Mr. Merrick, yeah.
Just, uh, how, how big is the bicycle store?
I don't, so if the architect's not here, I, I think we'll talk about when he's here and he'll look over the entire building. I don't, I, I, I don't know yet.
Fine, thank you. Uh, another thing, I'm having a difficult to read by myself. I'd just like you to walk through for me how. Uh. Sidewalks from and entering the. Project aren't integrated into the sidewalks and pedestrian ways within the plaza, so.
I guess, Andy, can you look to the, so there, there's this. Couple, I guess, a couple of things. This, this exhibit is a bit old now and it needs to be updated to reflect that. The head and parking spaces along the north side of the building, which will be done.
Alright.
Um, so that needs to be done, that needs to be, this exhibit needs to get updated. Uh, but, you know. In addition to providing those additional, I'd say, connections from Shaws to the other buildings within the plaza. You know, there is a, Andy, Andy, we can look to the latest site plan, I think it's the second. Sheet. There you go. I mean, there is, there's, you know, there's a business, there's a, there's a wide sidewalk along the front of the building. Um, and I think it's eighty wide and it's as much as maybe ten or twelve feet wide in some areas. And that sidewalk goes really around the perimeter of the entire project. And it connects to some of the existing sidewalks that are within the Port Plaza property in multiple areas. Um, you know, if you look at, up at, uh. Up at the crosswalks, kind of in the upper left hand corner of the sheet, there's that, yeah, up in that, up in that block tower area right there. We're tying into that area where there's crosswalks that go across to the, uh, to the west shops. And then, and if you go over to the other corner of the building near. Yeah, so it, and it's a little tough to tell, but that, that sidewalk is actually connecting to that sidewalk in front of the east shops. Uh, and, and it, it, it might be a little bit tough to tell on the graphic, but it is connecting to it. So it is tying into that existing sidebar.
So, you know, just, Greg, just to help with that a little bit, cause I think it's clear. Um, so Andy, could you go to the sidewalk plan that, um, shows the red and the blue? So the blue that's depicted on the plan that he's trying to find is the existing sidewalks.
Yeah, I think it's painted purple of this.
There we go. That's it, yep. So if you just blow it up a little bit, so the blue dash lines are the existing crosswalks. And sidewalks. So if you follow those, then you can get to the new ones, which are the red. Um, the ones that are outlined in red. And they actually then, a pedestrian can go to every one. Of the shops that are connected in the Port Plaza area on the, either the proposed new. On the either the proposed new connected to the existing blue dash or in front of the plaza itself.
Thank you, um just a couple followers, will these new uh walkways be lightened?
No, we were not intending on lighting, I mean, there there is lighting within the plaza, it's okay, so I guess they will be lit, yes. Um they will be.
From existing light in in the right, yeah.
Alright, and so. Sure. Um and finally. Am I correct that the, I think it was one of our. Comment and mention that sidewalk does not extend. I guess completely to the story, I mean, is that? Correct, or am I?
That's. Correct.
That's what I.
That's correct, it does not extend the story out, there's a there's a big great difference there, and there's a little slow room without. There's no room to squeeze in a sidewalk.
No, we're. But there are there are stores. I guess I'm beyond that where that sidewalk ends. These guys are or or not?
I'm not I'm not following.
I I just asked the question, are there retail stores? That exist within the plaza beyond where the sidewalk? And? No. No? Okay. That's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. Betty, um. And just a quick question, and and it'll go towards Stormwater later. Can you compare the size of the Kmart building to this building in. Footprint, square footage? This looks about fifty percent larger.
Yeah.
Footprint.
So the footprint of this building is seventy thousand square feet, uh and the footprint of the Kmart. Ode to around fifty thousand, but let 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 me double check that, I'm pretty sure this building is gonna be around twenty thousand square feet or.
And the reason I'm asking is it's. It's a great trick to draw nine thousand square foot of impervious. By adding twenty thousand square feet of building, it can be done, it's tricky.
Well, I mean, but under existing additions, there's there's really no landscaping around it. There there there's there's really no landscaping, and what we're creating.
I take Kmart and add twenty thousand square feet to it. What am I gonna do to? Make it? Not impervious. All the.
The rest of the site is largely asphalt, which I think is what is referred to, but it's his thing, he's already covered, essentially pushing a lot.
I mean, that that building goes all the way over to. The entrance, what we call the center entrance. Kmart doesn't, Kmart falls short by a hundred feet. So this building is massive, it also goes higher.
The impervious is anything that's impervious, whether it's pavement, excuse me, roof, uh building, um so. Impervious is being decreased as a result of this project by around nine thousand square feet.
I'd love to see those calculations.
Because of the landscaping.
It has a lot of trees.
Well, we'll we'll show you.
There's landscape areas being created, we can we can help them, probably show that.
Yeah, I'd love to see it, cause it's it's a huge increase in square footage. Fifty, seventy thousand, that's twenty thousand, you're gonna draw nine thousand trees somewhere.
That's because we're creating landscaped areas around the project, when there are there are none that exist today.
That's a long circus. But yeah, I guess for the next meeting, if we can get the calculations and they can show us how they did that.
Correct.
See that, Kmart, the new building goes all the way over to the road on the left and comes all the way down the street, it's massive. Compared to Kmart, I know Kmart has no trees.
But it's all.
All birds, the whole thing.
Yes.
Yeah, I know. So is a seventy thousand square foot.
But there but there but but there's 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 landscape areas being created around seventy thousand square feet, so. We are decreasing impervious surfaces when they look at existing versus.
Go see it, so Mr.
We can.
Thank you. Okay, um. Mr. Merrick, was there anything you were about to add that I didn't want to mention?
No, I don't.
Okay, um further questions from the board?
Yes. Uh I mean, it's. It's just hanging out there, so what's the plan on connecting this new building for four hundred new residents to story out? How can they walk story out and say, like, without walking? What's the plan?
There is no, I I guess they would have to go up Low Street, really, uh sidewalk along Low Street.
Have to walk all the way around?
I mean, they they can walk all the way up to with a sidewalk connection to the market basket, at least to the market basket property, um they can go up to McDonald's, they can go to all the buildings in the area of the plaza. But it gets to get to story out. We need to go up Low Street.
That doesn't sound like a good selling feature, I don't put that on the brochure.
Further questions? Anything further, um? What I'm inclined to do is, unless there's any further questions from the board on uh engineering. And civil and stormwater is we're going to suspend. This topic, uh leaving it open just as we had for traffic and parking, uh and. Will continue the forty B application or a subsequent hearing where we will pick up and continue, and um attorney me, what is the next? Area that you'd like to open up for, I take it?
So I believe, well, we'd like to finish up the civil and stormwater, um cause it'll be in the iterations, and and I think that I heard we were going to talk over twenty-eighth, happy to do it sooner, but. At that, but that was the case, in which case I believe that we'll be able to have the architectural review at that same time, because I believe that the. Um.
Okay.
Person has been engaged and will have. It back to us and then whatever happens between, so that's plenty of time to do that.
So what I'd like to do is I'd like to uh. I'd like to suspend uh for the moment for this evening, uh stormwater and civil engineering, keeping it open along with traffic and. Uh and parking, and then we'll endeavor to continue this for the twenty-eighth. And in doing so, we will plan to have our peer experts available on architectural and expect the African two percent. Uh or at least plan so that we can give notice to the public that we will be uh most likely getting into the very openings of architectural. So ladies and gentlemen in the audience too, there's, and we'll put this out there online as well, uh. Any uh public attendance and participation with respect to any of the topics we've talked about, including. For the next meeting, the very likely potential of delving into opening architectural, we encourage anyone who wishes to participate, be heard. To make yourselves uh available to uh hopefully attend and share your input and comments and thoughts with that attorney beat, is that? Um is that fair?
Yes, yeah, sorry, and I think that we can do, we can wrap up, I believe we'll be able to wrap up civil by then too, because we're gonna be have enough time to do that.
I agree, I I hope so, um so, yes, please.
There was a hanging question from our um. Training uh stormwater consultant about waiting for accounts for morosity.
Correct.
Well, he had those.
Oh, yeah, my my goal is to have that turned around, so that you get the letter that has all, you know, your typical letter response, and that's all gonna be resolved, that's the goal.
I want to have everything in hand, so this way we can publish it all on the city's website, so that it's full public. Uh availability, so that anyone can have plenty of time to digest it, we, of course, ourselves.
Right, uh Mr. Betty, I I just wanted to. Ask attorney me. Who I'm witnesses would be here to support. Our presentation. On drainage stormwater, so.
Sure, uh Mr. Meyer will be here, and then um Ed. Rafford, that's the right name, uh the architect uh will be here. Um and you know, I have, I I certainly understand everything that happened tonight, um but. The board has hybrid meetings, and so Mr. Dirk was out of state, but wanting to participate, and so we wanted to make sure he could participate. Um and so we didn't know that that was gonna be an issue, um and I understand, so I just wanted to make sure, so those those folks will all be here.
Okay, I agree, and and not to, you know, not to deliberate, but I think that in fairness, none of us really realize just how. Um problematic it 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 was in practice, it it works in pros, it it doesn't work in practice, it seems as well, so. I wanna make it, you know, sort of clear that the sentiment, I think, for our collective best interest is to have and plan to have all party participants. Uh experts and others who were gonna give information, testimony, expertise and such uh in the room.
Sure.
And it it has to really be something, it's a short window to begin with, it's a very important topic, it's great, you know, gravity in these various verticals. It's just so challenging to try to do it well, so I think we're all on the same page, but I I certainly appreciate what happened tonight as well. Um any further comments before we uh before we move to suspending? Alright, um attorney me, thank you, uh this moment, uh we have a motion to suspend uh and continue, I'm not suspending, to continue the application. Uh to the twenty-eighth, and I believe uh it is to finish engineering stormwater and to endeavor to open architectural. Some more. Feel like I just asked a question and basically framed the motion, I'm sorry about that. I just can't stop, I'm very excited, sorry. But yes, sure, we have a second.
Second.
Alright, the motion's made by Mr. Swanton.
Well, Mr. Swanton.
And seconded by Mr. Ginta, um calling the role is Swanton.
Yes.
What?
Yes, seconded.
Oh, sorry, take it for a second.
I'll say, thank you. Thank you, um do we have a second? Uh okay. Uh calling the role is Swanton.
Yes.
This is why, yes, Mr. Betty?
Yes.
Mr. Chen?
I think I can.
Uh that's right, you can, uh Mr. Agubit.
Yes.
And I wrote yes, all the uh the eyes have it, the motion carries and the matter is continued. Ladies and gentlemen, uh thank you for your patience late in the evening, and we will look forward to the continued participation and attendance if we, so choose next time, see you on the twentieth. Your motion, you're. Yes, I know, um we're gonna we're gonna move to our low street. Yeah, so uh before we. So, I know, closing, uh we'll close the public hearings, and we'll go to our business meeting, and we have the minutes from our last meeting on the twenty-third, any comments?
Comment that slowly just devolved into. When John Aaron White was talking. There was an issue. About open the curb or even reboot the tech comments and and uh the comments from uh Mr. Dirk. But then he said something, I thought he said something to the contrary about whether it was. Or stoplight was more than intersection, I thought he said it was not. And I don't know if I'm mistaken about that.
I don't think I heard that. Yeah, I I thought I thought I heard that too.
Um he, I thought he felt strongly that it was unsafe, but was trying to like split the baby, say he was not warned, I I I maybe I maybe I just took it, I didn't go back and re-listen to it, I apologize for that, but uh.
If he said that, that's somehow I.
I agree.
As long as maybe I mis, plus I misunderstood it, I I was.
Right.
Any, was there anything else?
No, that wasn't.
Any comments uh or modifications to our?
Motion approved.
We have a second, second, motion's made and seconded, the voice, we'll just take the voice vote off the.
Aye.
Favors.
Aye, aye.
Any votes, any extensions or no votes, the eyes have it, motion carries, thank you, Gretchen. Uh and now, do let's let's talk about our special, our next special.
I mean, we're running out of time in this year, and uh so when are there, when are there a hundred days, a hundred and eighty days of?
Summer.
We went for a three birthday summer.
Yeah, but it's sixty more days after that.
No.
Forty more days, forty more days for the for, we we have, yeah, we have the ability um. To, even upon the the toll of that date, we can, we can extend deliberations and invite their continued participation. Uh so essentially, we can, we have the procedural power to.
Yeah.
To.
Let's clarify that.
Yeah, 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 right.
They can't, they can't, they can't like have like.
No, but you have. Well, we can ask questions.
I don't think so.
I think. Yeah, I think, maybe I misunderstood, it's like, I would say, I would say this way.
What counted this way?
You get to December twenty-first. You can put it to the board, to the applicant, say that, you close it down, you deliberate, we won't talk to you anymore. We're gonna come up, you know, with our best decision, and you you deal with it, or if you wanna extend and see what we have to say, or what's in writing, or respond to that. Great decision.
That's that's actually.
That's that's maybe what you guys do, but once you close the public hearing, there is some grading as to whether applicants. Uh and do or say anything at that point, I've seen different practices, but I would advise it to stay late when it's false issues.
Right, but I mean, if we if we just simply put it to the applicant, if the applicant, the applicant.
Yes.
To, or the applicant to extend, um so that they may be involved. In deliberations.
They don't wanna be involved, they don't have to be.
They don't have, that's right.
I agree, but but nevertheless, the problem is between now and that magic day of December twenty-third, there's only two zoning board meetings after our October twenty meeting, because. Veterans Day lands on our day, so that one's coming.
So let's we need to schedule.
And the next one's Thanksgiving week, and I don't often can I make?
Okay.
I have to.
We 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 do office, but I just wanted to refer Kmart party, we uh we looked at the calendar, and then Kimberly had a couple of suggestions, looking at the city calendar, might be viable, we wanna throw a new problem here. Recognizing that unless the applicant, he's got an extension, we've got it for December twenty-first, so we'll look at the calendar, if you wanna note those dates, and you can grow up for a good consideration. Uh that works for anybody.
And also, it's November twenty-fifth, I can make it, he can make it, so we all make it, it's November twenty-fifth, is that the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, yeah, I can make it, the three. You guys.
So.
So the twenty.
Chair, are you around that day, twenty-fifth?
Yeah, I can do it.
So we so we have that one's good, in the forum for the for the Tuesday before Thanksgiving.
Okay. Is there any other?
I'm assuming that one.
It's a month now between meetings that we want.
From October twenty-eighth, you're saying, two to twenty-fifth.
Yeah, that's kind of a long window given.
I I agree, that's all I'm.
No, no, we 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 have to pick another date, sometime early in November.
We can get our city calendar, recognizing this one, which is why the other.
Um I, you know, I'm I'm not opposed, and I put this out there, and I'm not opposed to with enough advanced notice, giving notice to applicants with the bandwidth of the window. Uh flexibility of time to bump them. From a normal ZBA meeting to make room for this matter to continue, which I mean, it's a lot of. It's on the. No, we we do, we have one meeting. Oh, that's Veterans Day.
Is that right, that's the problem.
Uh. How about following me?
Wait a minute, the Veterans Day is not observed on Monday the ten?
Yes, it is.
The eleven.
No, no, but is it absurd, but when when are the city offices closed?
It's like the eleven, our training.
So it's.
So that's.
Well, traditionally it is, but usually they try to get it connected to the weekend, right?
Right.
At least you're safe to the.
By eight to ten, I don't know, we might have missed on Monday the ten, then.
Sure.
Are you sure?
I can't.
It's not the ten.
That's the question.
Yes, it's.
The eleven is our, again, I'm not in city hall talking, it's a little station, let's figure out the.
I know.
It doesn't, that's the reason why people don't populate that calendar day for meetings, that I did this, that's uh.
Well, I don't think it's popular, it looks like eleven is gray.
Um so I don't, I don't know whether, again, we'd have to verify the room, we can't guarantee around this ball, we have to make sure we can verify the room, but uh. Exactly.
It looks open.
Okay, so as far as we can tell, though, we have the procedure center, as far as we can tell, this one was available ten, if you wanted to meet that night, so.
Uh which night?
The tenth.
Ten.
Yeah.
The real world, that's all.
That's another.
Real world, that's all of it, can we meet the eleven?
I don't, I mean, can you, so like, well, again, just, this is back to the service with the, you know, city policy or city building, so that, you know, I I just, we don't control all aspects of.
The city, the city council sets a calendar every year. I I don't know whether they set it at eleventh or the tenth.
Well, what about, we're about twelve and the thirteen.
Yeah, and sorry, just to be clear, uh and I'm not even people myself, I make myself a bill, but like, just from the city, I just like, maybe the contracts, the city are referencing certain things, and that's called out as the holiday that, you know, for instance, the city employees, so maybe someone may not have to work, so. The idea that the building will be open that day, and we can't guarantee that other staff.
Alright, 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 how about Wednesday the twelfth, it's bound to be eleven, Wednesday the twelfth, we'll go to my house, are we doing Wednesday the twelfth?
We'll do it, we'll do it.
Wednesday the twelfth.
Small.
CBA. Maybe say.
Do it in the. Small. Small house. Small, small, strange beast. Whatever.
The kids. Yeah, so we just wanted to know, uh, at least as far as we can tell, the room may be available at seven o'clock, we're not sure about setup time, so I don't know. First of all, we want to make sure we can reserve the room, we can't guarantee we'll, hopefully that would be the case, but you may want to set the time, maybe it's seven thirty or something, just to make sure we can do setup, because we don't know who's leaving the room.
Why does it have to be here?
It does have to be here.
Well, again, that, so then we're back to, we just have to make sure we have another space, we can, we can.
You're telling me there's no other space available in the entire city of.
We'll, we'll. No, I'm just saying, because we're making updates right now on the fly, for us to verify, we have to make sure.
We're about to.
You know, that, that, from the word.
Yeah, I'm assuming, you know, again, in worst case, we're trying to get our floor, you know.
Let's, let's set the date.
Yeah.
I mean, obviously.
Find a room, it's just we can't guarantee where, just, yeah.
I have to hear.
There just has to be a space.
That would be public access.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll be able to find a room, it's, I don't know so much that we can't find a room, so much as that we can't, on per se, no, like, we'll write it, that's.
Okay, oh, make it on the twelve.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah, okay, so we're going to twelve, all right, you separate the rocks.
We've had two meetings, that's good enough.
I think that's good.
Twelve of them or whatever.
Perhaps, yeah.
Yes.
Perhaps we would, yeah.
We're good.
Andrew, sort that out, probably we're going to be giving, uh, this, uh, I'm going to say ASAP, yes.
Oh, yeah, 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 we'll get the heads up, I mean, um, we'll do that, and we'll do that, like, literally ASAP, that's what I'm, that's what I used to watch. And thank you guys for reminding me, because I, I nearly almost adjourned, but this was important to, like, on our radar, get this done tonight, so this way, we're giving as prompt notice as possible. That, this is what we expect, it's not that we, uh, it's not that we want to, it's that we need to, and, uh. That is also true, and I shared your frustration about how challenging it was, you know, uh, programmatic, trying to, like, to deal with the interplay of somebody online.
I have just one other. Brief procedural question, Andrew. So, I'm sorry, Andrew, does the planning office have to submit to the zoning board proposed conditions in the event that we get appointment?
Yeah, uh, sorry, I would say, uh, Karen, I've talked about this already, so, um, working from, obviously, a proper permit template for. Type of reporting, he remembers a little bit different findings, and, you know, statutory offenses and so forth. Karen, I've talked about that, preparing in advance, I'll bring it up for that for you, but also contemplating the usual format possible, especially.
Not, not only the format, I'm not about subs.
That's what I wanted to say, yeah, that's what I was going to get, yeah, so in, in addition to that, the substance of special conditions that you might consider here, based on the deliberations you had made. You don't know what, obviously, the perimeters will be, but we will start to craft out in the coming days, at least, um, what we think you're tracking towards at that point, based on the plan. Sorry to say, so we're, we're taking, so as things get modified or tweaked, or if they're incorporating plans that are not needed, but they're still there, we're, we'll try to craft in advance, so we have.
This is, this is where the magic of having legal counsel on board comes, comes to.
So we should submit our ideas to you?
Absolutely, yeah, thank you, and, and, you know, we may like, like, traffic, the traffic, you know, and, obviously, we may have alternative conditions.
Yeah.
And deliberate.
Uh, I consider us very lucky that we have, and I say this knowing that obviously you're listening, that you're, it's respectful. It's not something that every city town can avail themselves of. Um, we didn't have it twenty-three years ago when we did, uh, Port Plaza, we kind of just told them about it, kind of right. And we were responsible as members of that board to scribble down and strive along over months, the things that were important, that we thought were important to follow. Maybe we got most of them right, I can't, there was no, like, way to bet it. Um, having legal counsel here to help make sure that we write it correctly, thoughtfully, and rightly, um, and completely is huge. Because, I mean, it just allows us to do better work in the end, it makes you.
Yeah. I would, you know, I, I, I was fond of writing, some, some of these things are kind of great, I, I would. If I were you, if, I, I wouldn't do it, but I would almost have, I'm very.
Yeah, because this, this, this is born to be, the rules aren't a little bit, right?
Like, we're in about the whole Philly B statute, is, they don't really tell the board what it was supposed to do. They told the board how the, how the U.S. committee would review what the board did. And so everything worked backwards with that, so, like, when you're thinking about this. This is a great idea, almost have to think about.
Right, what, what happens on an appeal?
The, we, we would ask, we would ask the.
Is this a bit, almost like, like.
We're asking the, yeah.
Asking for.
Essentially, conditions.
Yeah.
Wild conditions.
And then we would chop those up based on.
Yeah.
Our system.
And, and.
But it also is, we're doing, why shouldn't they, I mean, they're.
They're going to their soul, right?
Yeah, it, it's, it's a window into, did you say a window of their soul, that's perfectly.
And then the flat part of the state.
Think, uh, we're still on the record.
Oh, we're on the record, sorry.
All right, all right, I can't even get through it, no, it's, it's. Okay, um, anything further, guys, before we, um, before we adjourn, I think we've got some great meetings set up, thank you all very much, uh, we have a motion to adjourn.
All right.
Seconded, all those a favor, aye, thank you, motion, meeting's adjourned, thank you all so much. Like, ten thirty, yeah?